I need a motion to amend the agenda.
So moved.
I have a first by Mr. Tisdale, a second by Mr. Lawrence.
All in favor?
To the policy agenda, we're substituting item 4D, ordinance to amend harbors, marinas and waterways, Article 2 birthing rates. Substituting item 4J, exhibit A only resolution, adopting amended charter boat rules for the small craft harbor in Point Good At Marina. To the consent agenda, we're substituting 5D, resolution authorizing the management and use of municipal building by the Mississippi Coast Historical and Genealogical Society. We're substituting 5FFF, adding exhibit C for resolution authorizing purchase of firewall hardware and software from Matrix Solutions.
I move the agenda as amended.
Second. I have a first by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion? All in favor? Have a six so vote. Ms. Newman is absent. Now move to the presentation agenda, the mayor's report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. This is just a normal mid-month meeting. And I don't know, we might be giving something away today. But welcome, everybody. Welcome your thoughts. And I don't know where the grand prize will be. But yeah, do welcome everyone to this meeting. And right now, I'd like to ask Stacy to come up and give us a little report on our nonviolence, Center for Nonviolence activity. Thank you, Stacy.
Good afternoon. I'm Stacy with the Center for Nonviolence. I'll be here just briefly. I've been speaking to you guys for like the last several months and couple of years about a family justice center model that we are proposing for our Harrison County area that will be placed here in Biloxi. So we want to give a brief overview of where we're at with that process now. And I have visitors from the Alliance for Hope International project out of San Diego to here to give you a little brief overview of what we're doing and where the status of that project is now. I know you guys have funded our project every last two years for this, and we're getting to the point of ready to start the strategic planning process. We just want to give you a brief overview of where we're at with that project in some Ken with the Alliance of Hope International. We'll be here to give a little bit of a detailed update of where we're at with that project.
Thanks, Stacy.
Thank you, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Ken Shatter, and I'm the National Director of the Family Justice Center Alliance, which is a program of Alliance for Hope International. And it is our team's great honor to be here in this community, to be providing some technical assistance to you, to assist with the planning for the development of a family justice center. So a family justice center is very simply a facility where all of the agencies that serve victims of domestic violence and their children come together under one roof in one location to provide the services a survivor and their children need in one place. This is way more than just a matter of convenience for survivors, because domestic violence is really all about power and control at its essence. And so it is very common, it is almost always the case, that perpetrators of domestic violence work very hard to exert power and control over their victims to the point that they are closely controlling their very mobility. So it's essentially not possible for victims and survivors to go to five or 10 or 15 different places to get the help that they need. It's also true, because of this power and control, that when a survivor decides to leave or when they start taking steps to leave a dangerous relationship, it is a time, one of the most dangerous times, because abusers will step up their power and control in that moment to retake the power and control back for themselves. And in fact, it's true that most victims of domestic violence who are killed are killed when they are in the process of trying to leave or after they have soon left. So being able to co-locate services is very much a matter of life safety for victims and survivors of domestic violence. And I am proud to tell you, you're not the first community in America to build a family justice center. The very first center was in San Diego, California, and it was started by Casey Gwynn, who is now, he's the founder and president now of our organization. And he started the first family justice center as the elected city prosecutor in San Diego, California. Since then, there have been more than 130 family justice centers that have been developed all over the United States. They have been built to serve communities very large and very small. About half of our centers are led by government agencies, and about half are led by private nonprofit agencies. But all of our family justice centers in this country have close working partnerships between the nonprofit social service sector and our law enforcement and prosecutors. We believe strongly in the family justice center movement that we have to hold abusers accountable, because we know in order to reduce the risk of lethality, it is important to hold abusers accountable. I also would just tell you that two of the really most difficult issues to deal with when serving survivors of domestic violence are strangulation, because strangulation occurs in about 68%. Well, 68% of victims of domestic violence experience strangulation. And we know that the risk of lethality increases by about 750% when there is strangulation. And we also know that the majority of cop killers in America are men who have a documented history of having strangled an intimate partner. So we have learned through this work that when strangulation occurs, we have to take different steps, extra steps, to ensure the safety of the survivor. And so when you are developing a family justice center and when you are working with other family justice centers around the country, you are tapping into a very special expertise around serving survivors who have been strangled. Another big issue is serving children who witness domestic violence, because children who witness domestic violence suffer long-term the very same harm that children who are physically abused suffer. They are also six times more likely to commit suicide, three times more likely to be victims or perpetrators of domestic violence, 50% more likely to abuse substances, and they are 1,500% more likely to be ultimately physically abused or seriously neglected than other children. So the bottom line is, we have to build systems, wraparound comprehensive systems to serve child witnesses, just as we have built systems in this country to serve adult victims, and just as we have built systems to serve victims of child abuse. So I believe strongly that family justice centers offer the greatest expertise and the best opportunity to build systems to serve child witnesses. So I can tell you that in communities where there are vibrant family justice centers all across this country, there almost always is a major reduction in domestic violence homicides, and there is a reduction in the escalation of violence in relationships where domestic violence is present. So I just want to give, I want to congratulate you as a city and as a community for making the commitment to develop a family justice center. It is easier to operate in silos, as happens in most communities. So when you commit to come together across sectors and disciplines, when law enforcement commits to locate with social service partners, when everybody agrees to come together, it's hard work. It's a huge commitment, but it will save lives. You also will realize great efficiencies and the opportunity to leverage resources and to devote more resources to building capacity to serve survivors. So we will be here today and tomorrow doing focus group interviews with groups of stakeholders, including two focus groups of survivors, who, by the way, we've talked to thousands of survivors across America, and every single one of them has told us they want to be served in a place where they can get all their services in one place. And they want to be served in a place that is safe. So that's going to be a huge focus for us. And then we will go back to our homes, and we will write up a report of our visit that will include a number of recommendations to help guide you from here to our next phase, which is strategic planning. We'll come back in about four months to engage the community in strategic planning, and I'd invite all of you to come participate in that. We hope to have 100 or 200 people that are part of this two-day event where we will lead you through a process to develop your vision, a very specific vision for what a family justice center will look like in Biloxi, Mississippi. And my last thing is, I will say this. We want you to dream big. Probably going to need to start small, but we want you to dream big. And that means, as you go through this process, I challenge everyone in this community to think about what you need to do to ensure that when a survivor walks through the door of your family justice center, they know that you, as a community, believe they are worth the investment. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kim. I really wanted to give a shout out and a thank you to Stacy Riley. Since 2015, eight years ago, she's been at the tip of the spear. And you couldn't have a better partner in doing what the things, you know, Stacy's done with the Gulf Coast Center for Nonviolence, and we're expanding, I think, the scope and reach, and I thank you, Stacy, so much. But as I was aware, my daughter-in-law was a part of the board of directors when I first became mayor. And it's truly, it's a battle that nobody in here would appreciate. But if you go look at some of the facilities and some of the challenges that walking through her door and her agency, it really will move you. And I think our, you know, city council and our administration will be there to make it even a step better. But she's been a champion in a lot of battles you can't talk about, but she's been fighting the battle. And I thank you, Stacy, and I thank the center for everything. And I thank you for doing this.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Kim. If the council has any questions?
Questions? Well, thank you for your commitment. And I'll also tell you, you all are going to be a model for the state of Mississippi. I believe this is going to happen here. It's going to work well. And then other communities in this state are going to follow your lead.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you. And I believe that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. We will now move.
No, wait a minute. Excuse me. Ariel Bishop, I'll call her AB. It was her birthday yesterday, right? So I want to wish her a happy birthday. She's in the audience? No, no, okay. Happy birthday, AB.
Hey, Mayor, it was his birthday yesterday, too.
Felix Orlando, your birthday?
Me, Ariel, and Walt. You had three of us.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday.
And Harper from Philadelphia.
That concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Mayor. We'll now move to council reports. We'll start to my left with Mr. Lawrence. Got 30 seconds.
That'd be the beginning. Couple of things. It looked like we need about 90 chairs in here, not 40. We got a lot of people come in. They have a reason to be here. We welcome y'all. Hope we treat y'all with a lot of respect. With every side you're on, that's our job as council to take care of citizens in the city of Biloxi. So definitely want to welcome y'all here. Glad you're here. Stand up for what you believe in. That's the name of the game. That's why it's America, a free country. We all have the right to do that. So appreciate it. Thank y'all for being here. Next, we had a cruise on the coast with a great, big weekend. Probably the biggest crowd I ever had. 10,070 cars resisting, broke a record. It's the biggest car show in the United States. Not only the state of Mississippi, the United States. The impact it brings to the city on the coast, $35 to $40 million a year. Huge. Great. You know, everybody showing off their fine old cars. It's a great thing for the city. It's a lot of fun. A lot of events we went to was packed. People just enjoyed themselves. Glad to be down here. Of course, we had great weather. That was a good thing. Makes it a lot better. But anyway, the wedding band and the cruising crew, we have to thank them a lot for what they did for the city for that week. And another thing we have is a couple of little small problems. Well, I'll do what you have to meet, because we need to get to what these people come here for and talk about what they need to talk about. So thank you. A little bit longer than 30 seconds. But it's all right.
You did good, George. You did good. Mr. Guines?
All right. I just want to meet with Sherri Bell after the meeting. And other than that, I want to ask Pastor Pennington to come up. As you know, we had some, we've been on the news a little bit about homeless, and I think they have some good ideas for us. So I invited him up during my time to make a small presentation.
So these are my lead staff here with me. So I just want to introduce you to them. They're very important to Back Bay, and they're kind of the individuals that are, I would say, professionals in the field of the unsheltered and homeless. So we just have a really, won't take too much more than 30 seconds, George, okay?
30 seconds.
Yeah. So thank you, Felix, for giving us time. Thank you to the police department for everything you do, the fire department, and the city council. We have really good relationships, and we want to maintain those relationships, but we also want to move our community forward dealing with the unsheltered and homeless. So Sarah, who is our Director of Client Services, I guess I didn't tell you who everybody is up here. So you've seen Craig Seen Camp before. He basically runs our rehab program. Some of you have talked to him on the phone. I think Paul Tisdale, we've talked. And Sarah's down on the end. Whoops, she's on this end. She's our Director of Client Services. Deanna is our new Director of Development, and Sean is our CFO. So we're going to have Sarah share a little bit about some of the challenges we've seen, all of us have seen with the unsheltered population recently. He's a little nervous, because you didn't expect this many people, right?
Yeah. Hi, I want to say again that how much we appreciate everybody here and the mayor and the Biloxi Police Department. As you know, and as you probably have seen, we've had an increase of our unsheltered guests coming to the Gulf Coast. Every month for the last about six months, we've had 50 to 60 new guests at the Micah Day Center every single month, sometimes nine to 10 a day. Our statistics are generally, I hate saying this, older white males, we call them seasoned saints, 55 and up. The demographic has changed to more senior citizens. And that's in our homeless services and our emergency assistance services, which is things like our food pantry. Our food pantry assistance has doubled from last year. We used to serve 250 people a month. We're serving 500 now. 250 housed and about 250 homeless at this point. There's been an increase, as I'm sure you can see, the chronic mental health conditions with co-occurring substance abuse, with not a lot of options and treatments available. We've also seen an increase in individuals that are receiving disability that are unable to afford the cost of living increases and viable affordable housing. So on average, if you receive a disability check in our homeless community, it's about $850 to $900 a month. And a lack of affordable housing for our unsheltered individuals, lack of rentals that will take our housing vouchers, and a year-long wait for senior housing. The costs associated with homelessness are multi-dimensional, spanning social, medical, behavioral, economical, and moral concerns. What does it cost Biloxi morally and economically to not adequately address homelessness and individuals and poverty? We believe, as experts in the field, a combination of tiny home, transitional housing, communities, and shelter space can work in Biloxi. Human lives matter. Homeless lives matter. Protect our people next summer so we don't have eight more reported heat-related deaths and countless others to the cold.
So just to take another minute to wrap up what Sarah shared. Our vision is for a combination of transitional housing, especially, as Sarah said, because of the lack of affordable housing right now. We envision a tiny bedroom or tiny homes on wheels. They're very small. They're meant to be transitional, meant to be stopgap. We're willing, actually, as Back Bay, to establish this tiny home village. We have a lot of churches that'd be willing to build them up north and bring them down to the south for us if the city is willing to give us some space here in East Biloxi. We're thinking Mercy Cross is absolutely perfect. It's not in anybody's backyard. So we just kind of put that in your hearts and minds. We have a chunk of land on Iroquois adjacent to Back Bay Mission. That might be another possibility. We could begin small with 15 or 20 tiny bedrooms and help get people off the streets. Kind of be our experiment. And if we're successful, then we can move forward. We think that we can probably stabilize people in those tiny homes in maybe one to six months, give them what they need, the tools they need to be good tenants in apartments, and move them forward. We've already got a policy and procedures handbook ready to go. It includes intake, what you heard as wraparound services, security, and we'll do all that we can do to help people move forward to sustainability and stability. We also would envision a non-congregate, traditional bricks and mortar shelter here in the city for emergency and short stays. So we're desiring, really, I think, along with the police department and our city in general, we're willing and seeking to really change the narrative here in Biloxi. We've gotten some bad press lately, right? Because of what's been happening in Mobile, between Mobile and Biloxi. We really think it's time to step up and challenge ourselves to provide some shelter, transitional shelter for unsheltered folks. I think nobody's to blame here. We all share the blame as a community, but we all share in the solutions. So I'd like to disclose by saying homelessness is not a personal failure. I was there during my high school years in Chicago when I moved from Boonville, Mississippi, because that was such a shock. And it's going to take support from you, the council. It's going to take support from the mayor, partnering agencies like the police department, hospitals, medical, and really each of you in this room. Final thought. One coast, this is one of our big challenges, and we can be one big compassionate community. So thank you for your time. We'll be moving forward. We'll have a lot of other thoughts about this. So feel free to give us any questions, reflections, either now or later. So thank you for your time.
I have one question, since you asked. How is the better way to give a program help in your efforts?
Primarily right now, it's just for the two police departments. I'm on the executive. I'm on the executive committee, and Chief Miller maybe could speak better to this. But my understanding is, right now, it's only accessible through the police departments, through supervisors. So we're, at this point, I don't think it's grown enough that we can use it for nonprofit work.
But it may be too early to make a real assessment, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's not really going to be anything long-term. I think that's the challenge. We're looking for something transitional, transition people into permanent supportive housing.
Any other questions?
Yeah. And I want to thank the Back Bay Mission. As you know, the model that you're talking about, I went to visit Olympia in Washington State, and this program just about mirrors the Washington State. Our city is right about the same size as Olympia. And if we do something close to what they're doing, it will clean up the downtown area and help handle our tourism issues, because homelessness impacts our tourism. So thank you, guys, Back Bay Mission.
We have some pictures of some of the camps, right? Part of our question is, do we want that or not? Tiny homes, right? Tiny homes, whether they're transitional or residential. This is something, actually, the Gulfport High School STEM class taught us a little bit of our first prototype. But again, those are two of the ones we're really excited about possibly. Because I think it's a win-win for all of us. Can I, Brett? And tourism will be also on the front shelf. Is there any part of the study that you sent?
Absolutely. Thank you, Back Bay Mission. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Ms. Newman?
Yes, I'd like to yield my time to Mr. Wayne Hingen.
Thank you, Dixie. I did sign this if I needed to. I'm Wayne Hingen. I might take longer than 30 seconds, George. I'm an attorney in Biloxi. My offices are at 979 Howard Avenue, and I represent Dan and Heidi Hoy. They appeared before you in May of last year seeking approval to begin their bed and breakfast. They did not get that approval at that time. It was later discovered that many assumed, and some were even told, that they were actually applying for a short-term rental. This is definitely not a short-term rental. That is a completely different application procedure. It's pretty darn controversial. It's a completely different set of rules and regulations and controlled by its own ordinance. It has nothing to do with a bed and breakfast. During the past 16 months since then, because that's been quite a while to pass, they did not give up. Dan and Heidi have become more immersed in our city, very close to their neighbors and the neighborhood and the surrounding area. They continued with repairs that they needed to make on the home that they bought that was brought on by a decade and a half of neglect, vacancies, and storms. They also continued with some renovations to meet the standards of the bed and breakfast ordinance, because this is their dream to have that. I would suggest that these things show a track record of how well they fit into the neighborhood and with their neighbors. Dan and Heidi are currently no different than the rest of the neighborhood. They have a home. They can rent it out for 30 days or more. They did not rent, or actually, they did rent for a 30-day period at a time to nine Beau Rivage contractors for a 10-month period. It was so discreet and respectful, most of the neighbors never even knew that they had tenants. There are many rentals in the neighborhood. A lot of them, we found, are on Iber-Ville Drive. There's no zoning change or conditional use or permit that is required to do that. But it doesn't allow bed and breakfast. For visitors who want a day, a weekend, or just a week, less than 30 days, and don't want to stay in a casino hotel or a motel or another accommodation, Dan and Heidi have to turn them away. That's not good for Biloxi. And then there was some that just wanted a bed and breakfast. Biloxi has only two. Dan and Heidi have to turn them away as well. Storms have changed the city of Biloxi substantially. I'm sure you hear that every time there's a zoning change request, but this one has a particularly strong impact in this neighborhood. Zoning has tried to keep up. It's tough. The Miramar Avenue, which is one of the lowest areas other than the point that we have in the city, still has many, many vacant lots. You drive down the beach, it's vacant. Except for some that have houses on them, they're sitting on top of poles. I grew up on Miramar. I grew up on the corner of Miramar and Glenn Swetman. It had a different name at that time. And I watched Dan and Heidi's home be built every time I went over to visit my mom. There are very few homes built like this one. It is quite unique. 7,500 square feet. And it stood while most like it fell when they were that close to the Gulf of Mexico. If they didn't fall, they had to be taken down because they were completely destroyed. It can be hailed as hurricane-proof, but I've seen some called hurricane-proof, and they're not. Changes with the property began this year after Katrina. It was sold to an elderly couple who lived in Tennessee. It was sold to an elderly couple who lived in Tennessee. I think they were 80. I understood they only came down twice over a 16-year period. After a few years, it started deteriorating, and the house became blighted and an eyesore for the neighborhood. Things got worse when it was broken into, and a security guard had to be hired. He lived there to protect the building. Many of the neighborhood were concerned about the future of the building, the future of their neighborhood, and it became quite a distraction, if not a detriment, to that neighborhood. Across Iberville Drive, plans are now being worked up for townhouses. It is owned for that. The property right next to Iberville Drive had a motel. It was owned for that. This is directly across Iberville Drive from where Dan and Heidi's Iberville Drive entrance is located. It's that close to this neighborhood. Those empty lots south of Swetman may be a long time from having any development. They are low, and here's other reasons. There are building requirements now. There's elevation and inconvenience. There are storms and flooding, even when it's not a hurricane. It has a CB zone to the west and an RM 30 to the east. General maintenance expenses are extraordinary if you live that close to the Gulf. And then there's insurance premiums. I don't need to tell anybody whether they live close to the beach or not about insurance premiums. All of these facts and considerations weigh heavy on the neighbors. When Dan and Heidi bought it almost two years ago, things started looking a little bit better, and now, knowing that they want to have a bed and breakfast and not a short-term, and having met Dan and Heidi, a great many of those neighbors support them and their desire to have a bed and breakfast at that location, the character of the neighborhood has changed. Dan and Heidi would rather not have to deal with a zoning change, but for a bed and breakfast, they have to deal with it. At least the change, unbeknownst to some information being spread around, is not to commercial or business, it's still to residential, just another type of residential. The Underwood case in the Mississippi Supreme Court said this, "A change in zoning involving a single property should be made, where facts and considerations materially affecting the merits have intervened since the adoption of the zoning regulations they were under." I suggest that Dan and Heidi bless this neighborhood with the purchase of their home. The neighbors now have an occupied, repaired, well-maintained home that is in harmony with the neighborhood instead of the deteriorating structure they lived with for 16 years. In the Saunders case, the Mississippi Supreme Court stated that preserving a neighborhood is a valid goal. Dan and Heidi have caused many neighbors to feel confident and stable about the neighborhood. Some have started their own repairs and their own renovations, and it can be said that their changes have ensured the preservation of this neighborhood that I grew up in. Biloxi is a tourist town. I've heard George say that right there from that chair. We all know that, yet there are only two bed and breakfasts. They're doing well. They are miles from Dan and Heidi's home. Doing well shows that some visitors in Biloxi would rather not stay in one of our other great accommodations. These visitors want the experience that only a bed and breakfast can offer. You are invited into somebody's home that is a bed and breakfast. It's personal, it's friendly, it's local, and the owners live there. The owners live there. Many people who visit Biloxi love Biloxi enough to sell their home elsewhere and move here. That's how Dan and Heidi got here from Wisconsin. That's how many who were stationed at Keesler got here, stayed here, live here for the rest of their lives. The city has expanded the Biloxi experience by recognizing bed and breakfast with their own ordinance. So, there's a public need for bed and breakfast. We don't have enough. Those things that I have set out are the facts and some law showing a change in the character of the neighborhood and a public need to change the zone for this bed and breakfast, addressing conditional use for bed and breakfast, y'all's ordinance. I submit that Dan and Heidi's home fits the policy and its intent perfectly. The intent is to allow an efficient use of historically significant dwellings and other related residential buildings and assist in their preservation, upkeep, and their enhancement, and that of the neighborhood, but at the same time discouraging commercial exploitation of them. The intent is to promote those that are compatible with the area by averting adverse impacts like commercialization. Dan and Heidi's home is historically significant, if not a related residential building, that's the words of the ordinance, of unique design within 7,500 square feet. It is a survivor, and it is not built on poles, and there's no age requirement. The intent is to preserve it and allow it to preserve the neighborhood. The intent is to promote it because it is compatible with the neighborhood, and it will avert commercialization. Their home already complies with, or they can very easily, when the time comes, comply with the recommendations of standards that are in this ordinance, monitoring, permits, occupancy, prohibitions, and requirements that they have to be adhering to, lighting, signage, parking. They can't even alter the home. It's a very strict ordinance. They're ready. They've been ready. I have prepared a more explanatory statement regarding this compliance. It's part of a package that I have. It's part of what I think would help in the decision, because it's setting out some very clear facts. That includes, and I'm going to hand it in as evidence, but I'm going to show it to you right now, this map. The orange that you see right here is Dan and Heidi's home. The green that you see all around it are their neighbors. Most of them are here. They signed letters or they signed petitions. This is a collection of petitions and letters. This is a breakdown as of October 2, signatures of supporters versus objectors. The Supreme Court has said that a neighborhood is the affected area. The affected area here, I've included as many as five streets. No neighborhood extends for miles. This one shows 66 on that date back in October, first part of October, who live around them. They're the green on this map. The number of objectors, at least at that time, is 39, but they had 59 out of the area, from the Holy Land to Miller, St. Jude, Beach Boulevard, and other streets on the far eastern end of that area. I also have photographs, that probably came from the planning commission as well, because I had the same thing. It's got inside and outside photos, and I have the breakdown that I said of the compliance requirements in your, in your ordinance. This is the home, and these are the people that you want, that you want to assist and you want to promote with that house for Biloxi. That's what your ordinance says. It is why Biloxi has the ordinance in the first place. Otherwise, there's no bed and breakfast. The planning commission was unanimous in approving this application. Dan and Heidi chose Biloxi out of all the places they could go, from Texas to South Carolina. We should choose them right back.
Do you have a copy of that map that I can read? I'll get it back to you after. I'm just, I'm talking about that.
Mr. President, Nathan.
Yes, we'll get, we're doing reports right now, so.
I'm not finished, so come back to me.
All right. Okay. Does that conclude your report, Ms. Newman? Okay, Mr. Demming?
George, jump in real quick, get just the piece out of the way.
Okay, Mr. Lawrence?
Well, you got 30 seconds? No one, and we're going, we're going to do that and use our time for somebody to speak. To be fair to the other side, I'm going to call the Bob Hutcheson to speak on the side that's opposing it. Bob, come up and speak at the mic. We're not going to have a one side of the pair. You need to be fair.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
You're not under three minutes of law. Looks like Wayne wasn't.
Thank you, George.
Thank you for hearing me today. I still believe we live in a democracy. I hope all of the members here agree. We still live in a democracy, even with all the chaos we have in our country today. We live in a democracy in Biloxi. This is a landslide in favor of those who oppose this. The numbers are insurmountable. They can't get enough signatures to trump what we've got. We're going to submit to you today 122 signatures in our immediate neighborhood that are opposed to this versus their 39. That's a three-to-one margin. There's no need for recount in this election. No need. The voters have spoken. Slam dunk. If this is democracy, the council needs to decide what the voters have put you where you are today. As you see on the petitions, we have 83 households on this map. Eighty-three households. Twenty-six on their petition. I heard the attorney just say that they have more signatures than around the house. Their petition has signatures on the streets of, let's see, Acacia, Clower, Miramar, and Iberville. They have 39 signatures. They have 26 households. We have 41 signatures on those same four streets. Audit the petition, if you will. I'm a data guy. I've looked at it. We outnumber them close, no matter way you slice this, way, no matter how you dice this, the voters have spoken. As you're sitting here in your elected positions, are you willing to tell 124 people to 39 that you know better than they do what's good for their community? Really? Are you going to ignore their vote and approve the classic? Spot zoning, this is the classic spot. If you let this happen, it's going to spread like wildfire. You make one exception, there's going to be another exception, and another exception after that. That's the way these things work. I would like a resolution, really, to save us all a bunch of time here. Carve out this neighborhood on the beach wherever all of us live, carve a strip of land on the front beach along the highway and make it commercial, or make it STRs and bed and breakfasts. We're for that, but coming in the middle of a neighborhood and parking businesses there is unacceptable for those who want to live here, work here, and play here. Look, I'm sure the owners here, Heidi and Dan, are really good people, but when you make a purchase of a home or a business, you, you make your sales contract contingent on the proper repurposing or proper zoning in advance of the act of sale, not after the act of sale. They've engaged legal counsel now, a year and a half later, but why didn't they engage legal counsel before they signed the contract? Should the mistake that they made cost us, 124 people, and by the way, that was two-week effort by a lot of people in our neighborhood to get these petitions signed? That's a lot of effort in a short period of time, but those are working and, and trying to get things done in their real life. We are in a democracy, right? If we are, this should be a slam dunk. We shouldn't even be having this hearing right now. I want to read the, the words of the city, the planning commission from last year. "The Biloxi Command Planning Commission, after much discussion, input from neighbors, and careful reflection upon the particulars of this case, voted to recommend denial of this requested zoning map amendment, having determined that no mistake in original zoning was found, and that no significant change in the character of the neighborhood had been established with no established community need for a bed and breakfast at this location." But yet, all of a sudden, a year and four months, it's so much different. I can tell you, the only thing that's changed is they're building more 7.5 single resident families around this place. For people who want to live here, like me, I moved from the Atlanta area to live here, bought land here. I want to build my dream home here. I don't want to be surrounded by business. The planning commission itself looked into this deeply last year and said, "No." What's changed to favor on their side? Nothing. What's changed to favor on our side? A lot. They're building more single-family homes around this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that conclude your report, George?
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Demming?
I should have made George wait till I was done. That was a lot. Ms. Bell, are you in the audience? If you'd come up here and give me some updates on some things that we've been working on. Now, of course, a couple of things that we worked on during the budget session and worked with the administration on was getting some amenities at the dog park, right, and getting a new light system at the Pops Ferry parks.
Right.
Where are we at on either of those?
All the quotes with the different avenues of what can be done out there at Pops Ferry has been turned in.
Pops Ferry, I'm going to say that, I didn't hear you.
All the quotes for the various avenues that you can take to put the lighting out at the Pops Ferry, whether it be leasing or installing poles with LEDs and different other ways from other companies, it's all been turned in.
You said turned down?
Turned in.
Turned in.
It's been turned in to, to engineering and to administration.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, when can we get, engineering, is, is Ms. Labata involved in this? Do we want to, can you give me an update, or should I defer to her? Ms. Bell, don't get too comfortable. We got one more thing after that, too.
So, we just, we have the options whether to lease, or like Sherri said, or to construct them ourselves, or to put the project out to bid, and we're just waiting for all the funding to be put in place to decide, because it's whether, if we lease, it'd be, it's a different type of funding, whether if we do construct, the actual construction ourselves.
So, when are we going to make the decision on which route to go? I know we talked about some funding mechanisms that were available that we needed to use, and. Can you, I didn't, his mic wasn't close enough. Can you?
Basically, he, he said that within a couple of weeks, we'll have it done. We've been talking back and forth about how we're going to fund, because we had some other things come up, like this grant that we're getting today for the Pops Ferry, so we've been talking about how we're going to move some funding around, so we've been discussing it. So, we're, we're working very close. He said within the next few weeks.
Yeah, I think, to repeat, you know, this FY, FY23 will be winding up with the last dockets, and we'll know whether fund balance and some of the things that rolled over, we'll be able to use in order to make the call on buy or, or lease. Within a couple of weeks, I guess I'll answer your question.
Okay. Save my questions for a couple of weeks, and I'll tell you all myself. Now, as far as the, the dog part goes with the shading structures, the different amenities, we.
Yeah, I'm, I'm getting quotes on all of that right now, various quotes. They seem a little bit high, so I'm just putting it out there for other playground reps and all.
Do we have the funding mechanism in place for that? Do we have a project? I don't.
Well, not really. Again, we have a bond that I think we're trying to squeeze every inch out of it, every, every penny out of that, so it'll be, again, give us a couple of weeks, and we'll know what's left of the recreation component and some of the other things from fund balance. But that should square itself away in the next couple of weeks after this docket.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Ms. Bell.
Thank you. Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, the folks who use Pennzoil McManus Park really appreciate the water fountain. They really do. That gets more hits than comments you make on Facebook, Mayor. I'll tell you. Now, are we going to get exercise equipment? We had talked about that during our budget workshops, and I know that we had some bond money available. At the time, you said that between, I think, the Parks and Recreation Department and the bond money, we'd be getting some exercise equipment out there, and so that's, that's the next thing we're looking for.
Did I say that? Yeah, we have you on, we have you on.
We will do it. Okay. Sign, a sign for Pennzoil McManus Park?
Yeah, I was trying to wait till last year. We did not have plenty for that sign. So, I'm going to get back to Dunaway and get that going.
And also one for the Town Green. They used to have a sign there years ago, but there's no sign there.
Excuse me, Sherri. You need to talk to the mic. They record all this, so that won't be on there, what you just said. Speak to the mic.
Okay, Pennzoil sign, I'm getting back with Dunaway sign, so probably within the next month, we should have that sign for Pennzoil.
Okay.
Also, the Town Green, the ones who originally did the sign are no longer in business, so I'm having to probably work with Dunaway also.
Okay. Thank you. Chief, question, I know that the homeless, a homeless issue has been in the news lately, and I, I'm trying to think. Some days, I can't remember what I had for lunch yesterday, but I do recall that maybe it could have been, been anywhere from six months to a year and a half ago. I remember you mentioning here at, at a council meeting, sitting where you are now, that there were some opportunities in Mobile, and in fact, some folks, homeless citizens, were going to Mobile. I remember you kind of gave us a heads up, made us aware of that. That was a while, might have been a year ago. But anyway, what's, so kind of what's going on with this issue?
Sure. So, that's almost two years ago that, that we made a presentation here, and so let me, let me just start by saying this. The mayor released a very eloquent, to-the-point, very accurate letter about, about the Mobile issue. There's never been a busload of people taken to Mobile and dumped out. That's never happened. We do have an agreement with a couple of shelters there that offer some services that we couldn't always get here, or we couldn't get them when we needed them here, and that's, that's no slam on any, any of the, the agencies here.
Let me insert, too. I think Chris was here, and I remember the roundtable we had with open doors, and a number of agencies that talked about certain folks that were able to take advantage, is it purely voluntary and purely, you know, in a helpful way, again, and talk, we, we've done, we've been righteous in, in, in what we've been doing and trying to help, completely voluntary in every instance, and it's been a collaboration, I believe 14 months ago, to be more accurate, on, on this seemed to be an opportunity for those who wanted to engage in purely volunteering and, and in, in response. If it didn't work out, we can bring you back, and that's how I remember it, 14 months ago. And that's how I remember it, 14 months ago.
Absolutely, absolutely the way that it is. No one has ever been threatened with arrest if they didn't go to Mobile, that's ridiculous, nothing like that's ever happened. I know that probably Mobile has seen an increase in homeless, like all the rest of us have, but it's not due to anything that the City of Biloxi or the Biloxi Police Department did. There's just a handful of people that we took over, and we took those folks over again for resources, because they asked to go. We explained to them about what, what was going on in Mobile, it's a great program, we explained it to them, and they asked to go to Mobile. And we've never threatened anyone or forced anyone to leave the City of Biloxi.
Let me jump in, too. And Open Doors, I think, was the one, we had talked in that meeting, in talking about opportunity, if people wanted a bus ride back to wherever they wanted to come from, that was all part of the equation also. So, it wasn't just going to a shelter, whatever, anything we could do to help and reasonably, you know, provide a better way to accommodate is what has been done. And I know a number of bus tickets were also part of the thing.
Absolutely right. And this is, none of this was done in the sense of trying to get rid of homeless out of the City of Biloxi. I mean, I think that's a bigger issue than a policeman driving somebody out of here.
It was, it was to help, not to, not to...
Absolutely, to help, absolutely, to find the resources that a particular person may need. And that is, that is it, in a nutshell, that's, I can't explain it any more than that, that's absolutely what took place.
Sure. I think Mr. Demming has a question on this topic.
I just want to, I guess it's a question and a comment, but is it not true that there were some, because this was a totally voluntary thing, that some requested to come back to Biloxi and were returned to Biloxi?
I think so.
I mean, this is not a one-way street, this was...
There were two that returned to Biloxi, but I think they returned on their own. Yeah, but the offer was made to them. If they needed to come back, we would certainly bring them back.
There was offers before they went over, the offer was, it was understood that, you know, if it doesn't work out, you can come back home, we'll pick you up.
Absolutely. And let me just mention this, too, somebody, I noticed that it was, it was printed that, you know, the folks from Biloxi, some of those folks were actually from Alabama.
Right.
We actually took them back to Alabama at their request.
So, what you did, Chief, you actually brought some of them home. They weren't from Mobile.
Yeah, that's right.
Right.
Okay. That's all I have, Chief.
Earlier, we were talking about the birthdays, and I think we missed the mayor's birthday.
Yeah, 47, that's what's 47, yeah. No, that was the year, excuse me.
Well, I wish the mayor a happy birthday yesterday, I think, but I spoke with the mayor, Mr. Creel, yesterday about the Broadway Inn Express. Mr. Creel, if you could give us an update on this, I have some constituents who are, who are following this issue. This is a motel that's in, in the process of renovation. I think it has a new owner, but the residents nearby are concerned about the security, the fact that this structure is not secure, that there's litter, trash, the grass needs to be cut, there's furniture outside, the pool, I think, is, I don't know, that place has been empty for a couple of years, that I'm aware of. Is anything going on there now?
We've, we've written him a citation, but because the neighbors were so upset about it to expedite things along, I called the new owner yesterday and asked if they could at least cut the grass and pick up the trash. I went out there to look at it and noticed that some of the doors had been kicked open. The owner and the contractor both got on the phone, they went out there today, they've cut all the grass on the property, they did a good job with that. The owner said that he's going to be sending a crew over from Louisiana, which is where they're housed out of, to secure the structures, even the storage building that had gotten broken into, and that they would get rid of the trash and litter that's on the balcony, and I think there was a mattress out in the parking lot, they're going to be removing that. But they did do what they said they were going to do, based on yesterday, the promise they made yesterday, and we'll, I'll get back in touch with them next week if they don't follow through on the rest that they promised.
All right, thank you, Mr. Creel.
A question. When you write a citation like that, what do you expect them to do? What do you cite them for?
Trash and litter, overgrowth, open building, dilapidated structure, anything that's in violation, they get written up for.
Did they have permits to do that? Do you have rights citations on people that don't get the permits to do things right?
Well, they came in and got a permit to repair termite damage, and that's what they started doing. They were tearing out spaces in there and replacing the rotten wood with, with good wood, and they did that up to a point, and then the work just stopped. Now, they have not pulled a permit to renovate the building yet, but I would expect that's probably going to happen pretty soon.
So, if somebody that don't have a permit for something, you write a citation to stop work, or you give them what options?
If, if they did not have a permit, then we would have stopped the work. Matter of fact, that's what happened, they had started the work, and I noticed that they were doing the work and didn't have a permit, so I sent the guys out there to let them know they need to shut it down and come in and get a permit, and they did.
So, if they built something wrong without a permit, what happens then?
Well, if we write them a citation, then they go to court, and, you know, it would be in the judge's hands at that point, you know, we would present our case, just like on any other code enforcement case, and then the judge would rule on it.
All right, okay. Thank you. I have one other, one other topic. At the Margaret Sherri Soccer Fields, the lighting, I know that the poles are down, that was mentioned earlier, I think, in some discussion, but there was, there were some concerns that kids don't, are practicing, I guess, at, at night or in the dark, and there are temporary lights, I don't know who provides the temporary lighting between the fields, and there were, there were concerns about, surely we can do better, and I'm thinking, I know that the lights are, we're in this business of, in the process of replacing those lights out there, I'm thinking, why is anybody out there at all at night, whether there, whether there's poor temporary lighting or not, and the fact that injuries, the condition of the field, and the fact that it's not well-lit, but...
Biloxi youth soccer is out there playing their games. As you know, the AJ Holloway is going to be shut down in January, but they were given the option of playing at AJ Holloway, they chose to move it to Pops Ferry. We, we thought they were just going to play Saturdays, and maybe just, you know, right past dark. We found out last night, which was the first night, so, other lights that they're not working. At this point, we want to go ahead and move them back to the AJ Holloway. I had some nasty emails about they're going to sue us and all this, so regardless, if we put two other extra portable lights out there, I just don't think it's going to make a difference. So, our views, Jamie and Ronnie got together, we want to go ahead and move them back to the AJ Holloway complex, and they'll play through the end of December.
So, there won't be any more practices or games?
They can practice during the day.
During the day, but at dusk, everything basically is off limits, so, okay. Thank you, Ms. Bell. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I get started, I just want to acknowledge Ms. Catherine Blessie that's attending today, it's great to see you, and thank you, thank you for attending this meeting today, really means a lot. Couple of things I want to bring up, and I've mentioned them in some of my past reports, but the paving of Skeet Hunt Road, I would like to thank everyone for that, certainly the Board of Supervisors. I recognize that we have one of our Board of Supervisor members today, Ms. Beverly Martin, put your hand up, let it be recognized for the good work that you do. I know Audubon, just around the corner, is on the list. There's another road down Hickman, which is Motsi Circle. If we can somehow get that pinpointed as well, because it's in the same, that would be a road that we kind of missed along Hickman and Skeet Hunt, and I don't want to miss that road, and they feel that they were left in the dark. So, if there's any way we can at least get them on the list, I would tell the Board of Supervisors, we may have ran out of our paving funds, so anything you can do for that one lone road would be appreciated. Yes? Motsi Circle? Okay, I'll double-check that if it is. Motsi Circle? Motsi Circle, that, that's off of Hickman. There's Audubon, and then there's Motsi Circle. Okay, all right, well, thank you, I need to communicate, because they've been seeing these beautiful roads, and they're saying, "What about us?", so, okay, awesome. Well, thank you, I appreciate the city and the county collaborating on these very important paving projects.
Kenny?
Yes, sir.
Motsi Circle runs down Hickman, circles around the river.
Yes.
Inside all the homes in there, that's where, that's where it's at.
Absolutely, yep, yep. Okay, moving on, I see that also on the list is the grading of some of the steep ditches on Oak Ridge. I, I don't know if that's on a timetable yet. Director, is there any timetable, any update? Not yet? That's fine. Over on Cedar Lake Subdivision, particularly off of Kimbrough, there's a project out there, we're still waiting for something to begin there, any updates on that project? Thank you.
The median, right?
So, they are going to be starting, hopefully with the next couple of weeks, if y'all remember when the, I think it was the Smiths on Old 67 came in, were complaining about their, their yard draining or flooding, that's one of the next big projects we're going to do, and when they go to do that project, they're going to jump over to Cedar Lake and do that, because it's, that's a real quick, one-day little project, so probably in the next two weeks or so, we'll see them jump over to that.
That's quick, okay. Well, thank you, thank you for that, Director. I may have something else, so if you want to just, maybe not, but this may be from Director Creel, demolition of an abandoned home in the, in the Kimbrough area, Cedar Lake Subdivision, any updates on that abandoned home?
What we do, once the council has voted to demolish a structure, then we have to go out for bids, and we have to go through the purchasing agent for him to advertise for those bids, so it's probably in Keith's hands right now. Once those bids are in and he's reviewed them, he'll send me a letter, let me know that it's, it's time to go.
Okay. Thank you, Director. And then, Chief, this may be more for you, this is also in Cedar Lake, a lot of, lot of activity. There's been vandalism of a, of a fire hydrant recently, there, there's a gentleman that's digging around the fire hydrants, he's actually, and I know Director Creel's gotten involved with this, getting into the medians and just mutilating some bushes, some azalea bushes, and getting in there and just, just having fun, I guess, cutting the trees all up and kind of disrupting that. Is there any update on that? Either, either you, Chief, does Chief step out of the room? Chief, okay, I'm sorry, you're on this side. Move my cheese over there. I, I think I have the identity, if you need assistance with that, I think I have his identity. Chief, any updates you want to add, or just?
No, sir.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. Reunion Place, there are at least three streetlights out, I think they're on our side, I believe. Who would I report that to? Mike, does simply just turn them in to you and their location? Reunion, Reunion Place Subdivision? There's a, I believe there's at least three lights out there, and I think it comes under the purview of Coast Electric, I believe. All right. I have lights also, and I know Councilman Demming, Councilman Tisdale referenced it, just goes to show you how important it is to make sure that we have lighting at all of our fields, not only for safety reasons, just for aesthetic reasons, and our parks deserve, Biloxi parks deserve to have the best lighting there is out there, when we're competing in sports, and then certainly when it's involving the safety of others. And I believe that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I have a few things. I don't know if this is Sherri or Christie. Eagle Point Park, I know that we received our bids and awarded the contract to Lamy on the lighting for that. Do you know when that's going to start?
Not, not yet, we don't, we're still working on getting the contract documents in place. Usually that takes about a month, because they've got to get their bonds and insurance certificates, and also, I'd say at least another month.
Okay. And then, before you go, the sidewalk, I'm leaving in two and a half months, I want to make sure that both of these projects get completed, but the sidewalk project, I know that we had gotten, written off on everything, submitted everything to MDOT, where are we at on that?
So, they came back and asked for a couple more updated letters and things, because this project was so old. We got all that back to them probably the end of last week, and so we're just do, I need to call them and ask them for an update, now that we've gotten all that back to them.
So, so, once they give us our approval, how long will it take for us to put this out to bid and get, get this?
As soon as we get approval from them, it'll go out to bid, the very, it'll, probably the next week, it'll show up in the newspaper. Then, we've got about a month advertising, and then we'll have to go through an MDOT process to get permission to award, so that's another month or two, so we'll be probably first of the year starting construction.
All right, thank you. And then Sherri, on Eagle Point Park, the other thing, since we have a price on the lighting, have we placed the order on the other things that we're going to be getting with the rest of the money that's in the budget to complete that part?
No, there's $30,000 left on that, and the bids that have been getting back on the shade structure, which you wanted me to look at first, have been 60,000 to 90,000, so, but I have bids on picnic tables, benches, and things like that.
Okay, is, is that correct, Mike, on the amount of money left? I thought we were like at 180, 190, and the lighting was 103,000.
Christie.
Christie?
Christie.
Is, is that correct, on only having 30,000 left? I thought we had 180, 190 left in that fund, and the lighting was 103.
That was 30.
Yeah, can, can we check on that? Okay, thank you.
That would help.
All right, thank you, Sherri. Tomorrow morning, 10 o'clock AM, we have a ribbon cutting at the, and this is a county project, but it's in the city, at the, the walking track and park at the, I think it's Fire Station 8 on Woolmarket Road, they'll be naming that after Supervisor Rocco, if anyone wants to attend that. And Chief, can you give us a brief update on cruising the coast incidents? I know we do this after every, every one of our larger events, arrest incidents, you know, problems that we had. I know that there were some, some issues with traffic and, and some complaints about that, and so can you just give us a, an overall, an overview of everything?
So, I'm not sure about the number of arrests, I don't recall, but it was about 500 citations issued, which is quite a few more than usual, but there were a lot more people here also, a few traffic issues is putting it lightly, there was just more traffic than our infrastructure could handle. We did the best we could do with moving traffic and keeping it, trying to keep it moving as best we could, while still getting emergency vehicles around. I know Friday, usually we don't have to go to one lane, usually till Saturday, we had to go to one lane on Friday, we had to go back to one lane on Saturday, and it was strictly just the sheer number of vehicles that were on the roadway.
Okay.
We had, we did have one death and several injuries.
And, and just off the top of your head, I know you don't have the numbers in front of you, do you, are most of the incidents from people, I was down there for multiple nights on the beach at a friend's property, and not in the traffic, we're just watching, saw multiple people get arrested, saw several wrecks, and every incident that I saw was someone that wasn't a cruiser, it was people in, you know, regular vehicles, is that, is that the overall?
Yeah, I don't, yes, sir, not to interrupt you, but I don't think that's, I don't think that's a secret. The registered cruisers, we usually don't have a lot of problems from them, it's usually spectators, people that are here to, to watch cruising the coast, or to come over just to be, you know, part of the festivities that we have the problems with the majority of the time.
Okay.
We also saw an increase this year in some groups that we don't see a lot of cruising, some, some other event groups that came this year that, that we, I don't recall seeing them in the past, if they were, they were, they were more enforced this year, younger, younger, younger crowd.
All right, thank you.
May I follow up? Chief, I'd like to just follow up briefly on a couple of things. Your manpower, or the amount of officers you had at your disposal this year versus last year, was there a difference of what you had to be able to control this event versus the previous year, or was it about the same?
We had, we actually had less people this year, and some of that was due to the fact that we had a hard time recruiting anybody from out of town. We usually don't have that difficulty, they usually lined up to come, we'll always get somewhere between 12, 15, 20, if we have to, we were able to muster up five this year, is all we could get.
Okay.
Can I ask the chief a question?
Yes, sir.
When you shut the highways down early, was that medical reason? That was supposed to be the reason we shut the highways down, when we went to the 2000 thousand, not traffic because they cruising. Was it medical reason or was some other reason you shut them down?
So I know that there were three ambulance calls earlier that they had a hard time getting there, but they got there. The reason we shut, we shut it down to one lane is when it gets so thick that emergency vehicles can't get around, whether it's a fire truck or an ambulance or a police unit. When it gets so, so thick that they can't, can't get from call to call, when the traffic starts to back up and begins to crawl to a point where we know that it's going to gridlock, that's when we go to one lane. We absolutely do not go to one lane till we know we don't have any other choice. Once you go to one lane, it takes probably an hour to get that lane established. So if you're not careful and you're not watching exactly what's going on and trying to keep up with the amount of traffic that you have, if you decide to shut it, it may be impossible to shut if you wait too long.
Well, a lot of questions, some of the people that said they were sent to call on the rain road and sent out of town. And so we got a lot of people in town, now we send them out of town. So what, how you direct them to people that's-
Once it reaches that, once it reaches that point where there's, there's more traffics, and don't quote me, but I think it's 6,800 cars is all that can fill the roadway in the event area at one time. 6,800 vehicles. You've got 40,000, 6,800 really doesn't mean that much. But what we do is we first start by shutting down the turnarounds and forcing them to go further before they turn around to come back. Because everybody's going to go turn around and come back with just about any event. That's the nature of the event. So we try to force them to go further. Now, at one time when we actually had a real venting plan, we vented traffic, we vented them to Cowan Lane Road and then they hit the interstate, they went down the interstate and they came back on the I-110, just made a huge circle. That allowed us to stretch traffic out to a point where we could open it back up and go back to two lanes. Both days, once we were shut down to one lane, the traffic never ceased enough for us to go back to two lanes. So yes, we do force them east and west as far as we can for them to go somewhere and turn around and come back. The problem we had this year was that venting plan where we would force them onto the interstate and they would make that circle and come back down the I-110 was almost impossible because the I-110 was at one lane, Bayview, and then it was no lane. So everybody had to get off of Bayview, so that wasn't, that wasn't feasible to do that. So again, and you've heard me say this before, you take 10 gallons of port in a five gallon bucket and it's going to get messy.
So if the I-110 was open, you think that would have provided that relief valve?
It, it may have.
Okay.
We've depended on that in the past.
Yeah, sure.
But again, we had more vehicles than we've ever had before and I'm not just talking about registered cruisers. Registered cruisers really don't mean a heck of a lot to the traffic plan. The majority of those cars, some of them are cruising, but a lot of them are parked. But again, it's the, it's the sheer number of people that come here to watch cruising or spectate or they just want to get in and drive. So if you're looking, if we had 10,000 registered cruisers, you know, I'm going to venture to say we probably had 40, 45,000 or maybe more other vehicles. Keeping in mind the 6,800 vehicles is all that's going to fit in that area at one time. And that's using both lanes, by the way.
Nathan, one question, something we talked about the I-110. They opened it up yesterday, so is the bridge fixed done or what? The I-110 is open, so everybody's worried about that. So it's going to stay open?
And, and the prayers that have been scheduled by MDOT will not require closing that lane again, but there's some more repair and more shoring up of the columns that were damaged by heat. Won't be shut down again.
So they have to shut it down and repair it? They're just going to work on it as it is?
That's it.
Everybody likes to know that because everybody uses that 110.
Felix, did you have a question for Chief?
I just want to acknowledge Mr. Bailey, Mr. Bailey, if we can end on some of these good notes, that record number, if he could just give us those record numbers and that economic impact, if he got a minute to come on up here. Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, Chief.
I love to see the man, always prepared.
I came here today, I'm going to try to only use my three minutes. We did have 10,070 vehicles that registered, 45 states, Canada, England and Germany this year. So we had a great turnout and as George was saying earlier, great weather. And we do have somewhere in the range of unregistered cars, probably 3,000 plus. Now, the Chief was talking about spectators, it's hard to have a handle on that. We always estimate around 100,000 folks that are here in that range spectating and I count it with just people. But the concerns I had, I just want to mention these to you and the reason I wanted to come today is because we've never had as many emails and Facebook issues about things that happened in the city of Biloxi, things that I don't really want to hear, I want to try to correct them. I was really surprised on Friday at 6:12, I got the text that we were going to the two lane program and we had major events. We've had this before in Pass and Ocean Springs. I try to spread out everything that's going on with cruising the coast, not concentrate cars. I'm not trying to take business away from Biloxi Mayor, but I'm trying to spread it out to where we can reasonably do this and I was very surprised and I got some reports that, you know, things were not real bad at that timeframe. I don't know that we've shut it down that early in the day on Friday. On Saturday, again, at 2:24, we got the text that lanes will be shut down. So my accountant met me at Ocean Springs at 1:30 on that Saturday and he drove, it took him 45 minutes to get from Gulfport to Ocean Springs. So maybe things were building up and starting to get bad. I know Saturday is a very busy day. If you talk to some of the restaurants on Restaurant Row on the beach, their business went to nothing on Saturday evening. They were hurt really badly by this because people cannot get to, get to those restaurants. When you go from four lanes to two, we're going from what we are, you know, advertised to be a major tourism destination to a two lane, small town. We just can't do that. We've got to, we've got to look at this, is there a way that we can stage or do something else that we're not doing this time? The boardwalk, I mean, we've got, a lot of, a lot of the cities have used and I think Sheriff's Department and also Police Department has, has some of the small four wheelers that can, if we have an accident or an issue that we can get to them. The sheriff's got his helicopter at Edgewater Mall. There are a lot of ways that we can handle this, I hope, using other, other ways of staging and not shutting down those lanes when we need them the most. We only had a 4.7% increase in registration. We had a 77% increase in traffic stops this, over last year. This year was 1,084, last year was 611, 21 was 434. So we've had, like I say, a lot of complaints, a lot of concerns that, you know, normally we don't have. I've got copies of these for all the council members, the mayor and the chief. And like I say, these are things I don't want to hear and have to talk about, but they're here and, and we do have traffic issues and if there's a better way to do it, let's figure it out and do it because we are, we are a great place to visit and as we, as you can tell, a lot of people like coming here. So I'm willing to work with the city and the Chief to see if we can come up some other ways of doing this and, and make this event a great event for us and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to y'all today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And then the last thing I have on my report is this, this year we've experienced an extended dry spell and I know this is something I mention regularly, I just want to make sure that Public Works and then Contractual Services, we're out getting to these ditches and these easements and stuff that normally is too wet to get to, to get those cleaned out and stuff. I know there's, there's, like last year, it was really wet and so there's areas that we couldn't get to and now we, with it being as dry for as long as it has been, you know, there's areas that we can get to that haven't been cut and maintenance in a long time. And so if we can just make sure we're on top of that and that's all that I have for my report. We'll now move to the public agenda, citizens' comments. We'll have a total allotted time, 45 minutes. Each person will be given three minutes. When the bell rings, your time is up. Now, we're going to have a lot of people in the room that want to speak, so we are not going to allow you to go over three minutes at all. And I will move from each side of the room into the back instead of just staying on one side today to make sure that everyone gets, gets an opportunity or as many get an opportunity. Whenever you come forward, please state your name and then sign in.
President, since you have so many people involved in this, should just alternate. The ones foot or the ones against it.
We'll move around the room.
But you don't want to hit five or a row and somehow, so that's the thing to do to be fair, just alternate.
We'll, we'll make sure that both sides get, have time.
Not that hard, just alternate.
And, well, there's more people here to speak than just on this subject.
I understand, let us talk one way or another.
So whenever you come forward, please, please sign in and state your name and address. I'll start on my left side with the first person. Sir, you had your hand up first, please come forward, state your name, sign in and you have three minutes once you start speaking.
My name is John Dwayne Brooks. Much for that, man.
Keep talking to me, John, talking to the mighty. Please.
Good afternoon, council members. I already stated my name. Mr. George is my ward member, or the ward I live in. I'm here to address the issues of the construction or deconstruction of all the streets around Crawford, Howard, Rosetti, Oak, Railroad Street. It's, we're down to where we can only get in one way or out the same way. If anything happens, we don't have an alternate route. In order for me to even go to McDonald's to buy a hamburger, something that's only three quarters of a mile away from my home, I got to drive 3.7 miles. Not to mention the potholes, the fact that my street is so tore up, my driveway hasn't been fixed. I've asked kindly and I've talked to this man on the phone. Now I got a sinkhole in my front yard. I don't know what else to do. I can't afford to keep repairing my truck because I just, I'm not, I can't. Anyway, that's all I got to say. I just wish someone would address the issue about Nickase, tearing up everything and not doing what they're paid to do, which is to repair what they tear up and they leave. And I'm just done. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. I'm going to move to this side of the room and then I'll come right back. Anyone on my right side? Anyone on my right side? Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, distinguished members of the Biloxi City Council and fellow residents-
Would you please state your name and address?
My name is Timothy Wild and I live at 1490 Beach Boulevard in beautiful Biloxi. I stand before you, or sit before you, not only as a concerned homeowner, but also as a committed member of this vibrant community. Over the past few years, I've invested significantly in my property, contributing to the growth and beauty of this city. Today, I'm here to express my support for the proposed ordinance that aims to establish standards and events in our Biloxi, in our beloved Biloxi that y'all are voting on next week. I serve as the CTO of a healthcare company, a role that often requires me to travel for work-related functions. Whenever I'm asked about what it's like to live in Biloxi, I describe it as a paradise for 50 out of 52 weeks a year. Our community is blessed with stunning landscapes and a warm, welcoming atmosphere. I appreciate the value that events like spring break, scraping the coast and cruising the coast bring to our local economy. However, there is an issue that we must address. These events have at times disrupted the peace and safety of our community. My personal experience reflects the concerns that many residents have raised. Over the past few years, my property has been vandalized. My wife has been threatened with a gun and my yard has routinely been used as a restroom by event attendees. During the last Cruise in the Coast event, a white female defecated on my property. Despite my best efforts, including the installation of cameras and prominent signs warning against trespassing and that you're being videotaped, these disturbing actions have persisted. I would like to emphasize that I understand the importance of these events for our community. They bring much needed revenue and vitality to Biloxi. However, I believe that it's time for us to establish standards for such gatherings. This is not an uncommon practice in other major cities. Permits and guidelines help maintain a balance between the economic benefits of such events and the well-being of residents. The proposed ordinance, which aims to set standards for events in Biloxi, is a step in the right direction. It will ensure that event organizers take responsibility for the behavior of their attendees and the impact on our community. By having guidelines in place, we can strike a balance that preserves our city's charm, its thriving economy and the safety and comfort of its residents. I am confident by working together, we can address these issues while still benefiting from the economic value of these events. Let's ensure that the paradise we enjoy continues to shine brightly through these events, not only for residents like me, but for everyone who calls Biloxi home. Thank you for your time and attention.
And would you please be sure to sign in? We'll now move to the back of the room. Anyone in the back of the room that would like to speak, sir, please come forward. Please sign in and then state your name and address. We'll get you after. Go ahead.
My name is JR Singleton. I want to address everybody. This is my first time here. I know Mr. Tisdale, I'm from Bay St. Louis. First of all, I just want to speak with the homeless situation. I've been homeless since 2019. My dad and my mom passed away. I lost my dad from cancer and I lost my mom after Hurricane Katrina. But the real reason why I'm here, a lot of people see things from a different aspect or a different light and when you don't get to know somebody, you can't judge because you're sitting behind a desk or behind a phone. I was working at the Bovard's three years ago and I was making almost 1250 every two weeks. I'm not a person about money. I don't care about fancy cars or the way that you live, but the people that do matter, like I'm hearing people in here, I'm seeing peoples like me, we were just speaking about something just a minute ago, about the houses. People that are here, I'm from Bay St. Louis and we have a bed and breakfast over there too. But if you don't have amenities for the kids, for people around here every day to go to, seven o'clock at night, I'm walking the streets, nobody's out. Back before Hurricane Katrina hit, people used to be out two o'clock, three o'clock in the morning, drugs, alcohol, having fun, lax spring break, cruising the coast. I worked at the Coliseum for cruising the coast and you meet people, people that come down here every year, you don't see them every day like in New Orleans where they have Mardi Gras and different events. So like, I want to ask all this. To be one of the second largest cities in Mississippi, why we don't have no Dave and Busters? I reached out to one of the people in Texas and I called them myself and they said nobody has reached or said anything. Piccadilly's at the mall, I used to go to every weekend and eat. Things that we used to grow up in the neighborhoods, we used to have block parties and I'm from the hood, but I went to private school. I went to St. Stanislaw, so I'm very educated, very knowledgeable. I don't judge nobody because of color, your skin and your contact of your character, but for as a person, I see the problems and I see what's going on in the communities. People are pushing everybody out, for people to come out from, from, from the inside out and outside in. So if you have somebody come from Virginia or Illinois or Minnesota, they don't know about the coast, but they're coming down here to have a good time and then they're out. I go to the casinos every night in our sports bit and I meet people, I talk to people and I'm polite, humble, I have no problems, I don't cause no problems, but I'm judged because of my hair, my color, I don't wear a suit, but I'm just like you too. I have problems. My daughter's locked up right now for a armed robbery and I can't do nothing. I have problems, my daughter's locked up right now for a armed robbery and I can't do nothing. I can't afford to get a lawyer, but I still can go to work.
Your time is up, thank you for your time. All right, Ms. Blessie, come forward. Please sign in and state your name. Michelle, are you gonna sign in for him or? Okay, yeah.
Good afternoon, Mayor Gillich and city council members. My name is Catherine Blessie. I'm a former co-owner of Biloxi Chateau Blessie Bed and Breakfast, which now operates as the historic 1908 B&amp;B. After Katrina, many of you remember my husband Walter Blessie, who converted that, what we had been our personal home since 1986 to a beautiful and successful bed and breakfast, which began serving visitors on the Gulf Coast in 2009. After Walter's passing, in 2017, I relocated to Oxford, Mississippi. And it is always a joy to come to the coast, which a large part of my heart will always reside. I am honored to be here speaking to you in support of Heidi and Dan Hoy, who are also interested in sharing their beautiful home with tourists longing to experience the warmth and hospitality that can only be found on the Mississippi Gulf Coast. I recently became in contact with Heidi through a mutual friend, Karen Sock. And it did not take long for Heidi and I to bond over our shared passion for serving others on the coast through hospitality. And it is not a glamorous job, I'll tell you, you have to love it. It is fascinating that what might motivate one hospitality, which is defined as a friendly and generous reception and entertainment of guests, visitors, or strangers. I have discovered that the Hoyes are motivated by their professional gifts and talents and also love for being given back to the community. They are eager to be successful financial contributors to the business landscape of the coast. Professionally, they are gifted and talented. Combined, Heidi and Dan have held the roles of caterer, chef, executive chief, and director of dining services. But the corporate restaurant industry is fought with pressures and stress that are unique, and so, on their honeymoon, they dreamed of owning their own bed and breakfast for working for themselves. Originally from Wisconsin, they searched from Galveston to South Carolina for the perfect location and found here what we all love, a small coastal community of great people and an affordable place to live. In the two years since they've arrived, Heidi and Dan already have been contributing to our community through the American Red Cross, the American Cancer Society, and the Back Bay Mission. They also support the arts and are eager to join the Chamber of Commerce. Serving others is a posture they adopted after being on the receiving end of grace and hospitality during trying, personal times.
Ms. Blessie, your time is up.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, sir, come forward. If you will, please state your name and then when you're complete, whenever you're finished, please sign at the table.
Thank you very much, my name's Jerry Gammons. I live in Biloxi and I'm a street rider and hot rodder and been doing old cars a long time. I have nine old cars personally. I just want to tell you, I've been to large car shows all over the United States. The biggest there are. Biloxi Police Department does a phenomenal job with Cruising the Coast. A lot of events I've been to, there's very little police presence. It kind of makes you uncomfortable when you got over 50,000 people around you. You don't see any police presence at all. That's not a good feeling in today's environment. So I don't want to take our folks for granted, our badger, radom. It's easy to criticize, condemn, complain about somebody, but the Biloxi Police Department does a phenomenal job, we take it for granted. I don't think anybody can ever say Biloxi Police Department is heavy-handed, but Chief Miller doesn't put up any foolishness either. I live off Highway 90, can see the beach from my house. There's a police officer stage at the front of our neighborhood, Edgewater Park, one to the rear of the neighborhood. They don't allow people to cross through the neighborhood for Cruising the Coast. Not something we ask for, they do for us automatically. And the police officers there are very friendly, polite, cordial, always smiling, and always trying to help people. If somebody comes in the neighborhood inadvertently, they'll ask them politely to turn around and go back out, they're not allowed to cross through. As far as the traffic cones irritate people, but I don't think anybody should be driving if they can't drive an automobile between the traffic cones. They shouldn't be on the highway to begin with. Some of my friends have complained about Biloxi and the word got out, a lot of people said, oh, don't go to Biloxi this year. They're giving tickets left and right. Well, guess what, folks? If they give you a ticket in Biloxi, they probably deserve two of them. Biloxi Police been a bit backwards not to be harassing or threatening or intimidating, but they're always polite to people. If they got a ticket, they deserved it. I may get a ticket on the way home, but I still think they're the greatest law enforcement agency in the United States.
Get them, chief.
I've called other hot rodders, I've called other clubs on the coast. No one had a complaint about Cruising the Coast with Biloxi. Yeah, it's crowded, but Chief Miller's an absolute genius to come up to traffic cones. He couldn't build another highway. He couldn't add additional lanes to the beach road. He came up to traffic cones and it works to perfection. There was somebody hauled out of my neighborhood on a four-wheeler several years ago before they started traffic cones to get to a hospital, to get evacuated out. They had to come in with a four-wheeler with a stretcher to get the man out of the neighborhood and take him to an ambulance where they could get out of the neighborhood. So again, I just want to express my sincere thanks to Biloxi Police and what they do for us. And I hope that everybody realizes what significance a great police department we have in Biloxi, Mississippi. And it's all based on, Lee Iacocca said it best, the pace of the leader sets the pace of the team, and that leader's Chief Miller. So thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gammons. Please sign in over here with Ms. Michelle. Anyone in the back of the room? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Mindy Slosser. I live at 155 Clower Street, Biloxi. I am a former Biloxi teacher and my husband works for the gaming entertainment here on the coast. We moved here a little over 10 years ago from North Carolina and fell in love with the secret coast that no one near us had ever heard of before. And we've made our life here and we love it very much. We actually share a fence with our beloved neighbors Heidi and Dan. They are directly beside me and the fence that we share with them is very well-maintained, a beautiful concrete fence with ivy and, you know, it's just a beautiful home and the things that they've done to that place from what it was before they moved in has definitely changed it drastically. I think that I could sit here and talk for days about the character and the people that Dan and Heidi are and how they've already affected my family's lives in just two years. We've become best friends and they're just the most welcoming people that we know. But I think the main thing here is that our neighborhood seems to be more concerned with it being imposing to have the bed and breakfast. I just want to state that when they did have the guests that were working on the Beauregardge roof at their location for about six months, given, like I said, I do share a property line with them. They used to let my son and I come and swim at their pool and so I would text Heidi and say, hey, can we come and swim today? And when I would do that, I had no idea that the men were using the pool. That's how quiet it was. That's how well-maintained that bed and breakfast I know will be and will be taken very good care of and in care of the neighbors' feelings for anything that may be disruptive. I had no idea that they were there unless I saw them and were talking to them. It just, that's the main thing that I think is the most concerning. And they're just, they're gonna take really good care of that place and that's all. I just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
All right, we'll now move to my left side. Mr. Swetman.
Good afternoon, I'm Chevus Swetman. I live at 1210 Beach Boulevard. I'm president of the Peoples Bank. I also happen to be chairman of Cruising the Coast. Just wanted to mention a couple of things. They were talking about the congestion. Well, this year, you know, what Cruising did is we opened up another event in Waveland, in Hancock County, the same day that we had the block party over here in Biloxi, trying to spread the traffic out. Now, you might not think it's much, but Waveland hadn't had anything since Hurricane Katrina. And we've been trying to fill in some of these other areas and to build back some of their tax base. Also, this past year, we encouraged a lot of our participants to go over the following day to Moss Point. You know, Moss Point had that tornado go through and, you know, we talked to the car club people, we tried to direct traffic out there. I went out there just to be on the safe side, to be sure that they had enough people visited their riverside and you couldn't find a parking space. So what we're trying to do on these events is spread them all up and down the coast. So that's all I'm gonna say about Cruising. We're here to help, we're here to grow the economy. I'd like to say one other thing, not on Cruising though, but that's on the Back Bay Mission. Now, the Back Bay Mission, I don't know if you know it or not, has been here for 100 years. They've celebrated their 100th year. And I remember when I got out of service in 1973. And we got out of service and I remember seeing what they had, a little concrete block building. I think they were renting from the Methodist Church at that time. But they have always been here. They've always rolled up their sleeves and they've always done whatever they could for Biloxi. So I just wanted to commend their work and the city for cooperating with them. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Swetman. Ms. Martin?
You're not that old, are you, Chevus, 100 years old?
Hey, y'all, Beverly Martin, 2012 Bay Harbor Drive. I'm speaking on behalf of Cruising the Coast, I was a founding board member. I remember 26, 27 years ago, the Casino Operators Association, where I was employed at at the time, asked about copying a group called Hot August Nights out in Reno, Nevada. They could not understand why October had the most awesome weather of the year on the Mississippi coast, but the deadest sales and no hotel room sales. So they flew me out there, I went out there, took some of my best friends with me, except for Woody, he didn't make it, but. Anyway, we came back and we pulled it off, we had about 200 cars the first year and now I'm just glad we're having a problem with the traffic. I will say, however, that I love Chief Miller, he knows it. I hate those cones, I'm not gonna lie to you. I hate them, I did not set them on fire under the bridge. I hope they were under there, quite honestly, but anyway. But I can tell you, I got stuck on Pass Road about 3 o'clock Saturday night and it was not pretty. It took me an hour and a half to get from Cowan Road to the Bee's Road. Excuse me, I didn't make it to the Bee's. I made it to the road by Keystone Federal and I turned and went around and cut through all these neighborhoods and I'd already cut through College Park. And anyway, I find out that it's because we're down to two lanes on Highway 90 instead of 4. So my suggestion is, why not use the sand beach? I know our Sheriff's Department has plenty of beach vehicles. I know City Biloxi has beach vehicles. If they can rope off areas of the beach or the birds, we should be able to rope off an area for emergency responders. I mean, I don't think it's rocket science. The other thing I have real quick is I have identified four grants. One, this year, from the City of Long Beach, that paid for the police during Cruising the Coast. Long Beach had a parade, they had about a five-hour window. They got $10,400 and something bucks, $10,421.63 for the one full-hour event. This came from the Stone Garden Grant Program, which is Mississippi Office of Homeland Security. The county gets some from the Mississippi Office of Highway Safety. This year, they got $57,232. Unfortunately, don't know what the actual expenses were. 10 years ago, they got $47,949 and that was back in 2019 for Cruising the Coast.
You got 30 seconds, I don't know what, you must have turned your microphone off. But get, get. Thank you. In the back, Mr. Burdrum. You can sign whenever you're finished, just state your name and.
My name's George Burdrum, I reside at 175 Miramar Avenue in Biloxi. I am opposed to rezoning for 161 Glenn Swetman Street. Rezoning opens a huge can of worms. It sets a bad precedent in an area that is 100% single-family 7.5. There are currently two houses in very close proximity coming out of the dirt right now. There are four more houses coming between now and the end of the year. There are two fairly large tracts of land in that same area. If this rezoning goes through, you're gonna have people coming here to say, wow, I want mine rezoned because I'm gonna build some apartments or townhouses or whatever the case might be. West of Ibraville, close to the beach is fine. All the way across, we should be protected. We don't have a homeowners association, we are called Miramar Subdivision. But we don't have any protection other than the zoning, the rules, the laws, and the regulations. The last time I was here, I gave you 98 signatures. All very close to the heart of the matter. Bill Morrison, Ibraville, Clower, Miramar, Acacia, Jeff Davis. We all have a vested interest in this. I'm gonna give you 24 more signatures today. All the way across, we did not go far. Somebody jumped up last time and said, oh, well, you went over to White Avenue. Man, we're a mile west of White Avenue, we didn't come close. But they have some skin in the game over there. We need to be protected, rezoning is a bad idea. It sets a bad precedent. The Mississippi Supreme Court, in a case called Modak Turan versus Johnson, and I will send you a copy of this, I don't know where this is all going to go today. I'll be happy to send you a copy. The Mississippi Supreme Court found that zoning ordinance to permit bread and breakfast had some problems. They held that the tax amendment were intended to benefit one, to benefit one bed and breakfast. And that's what you're doing here. They further found, the court found that the amendment constituted illegal spot zoning. And the city did not dispute that that amendment only applied to one property. It's been to the Supreme Court. We're gonna go through the same thing again. Thank you for your time and good luck.
All right, we'll now move back. Back to the left side of the room.
Hello, my name is Heidi Hoy. This is all about Dan and I, I apologize. I want to make this clear, we are not Miramar subdivision. According to the maps that the city gave us with the planning commission, we are actually considered North Cayman Cove. And our property is separate from the Cayman Cove subdivision, Miramar subdivision, Ibraville. Our property is sort of a barrier between commercial business and subdivisions. My husband and I are humbled by all the support that we have here today. When we came here a year and a half ago, by all the support that we have here today. When we came here a year and a half ago, we didn't have all this support. People didn't know us, didn't know what we were trying to do. We had only been in Biloxi for six months at that time. These neighbors that are here today are behind us 100% with encouragement, with advice, organization, and variety of skill sets that we are truly thankful for. We came here to start a better life, a new life. After going through some different things in Wisconsin, we decided to follow our dreams, go into business for ourselves. After going up through the coast, that you already heard, we visited different areas in the country. We found that Biloxi was the best fit for us. Another thing I want you to know is that we moved down here before we purchased this home. We found this home, and we decided to give it a shot. We did not have, or we could not apply for zoning until you own a home. You cannot apply for a permit until you own a home. To say that this person, you know, could have a contingency of us buying the home, well, we, we took a gamble. We have faith in Biloxi that they're gonna let us do our, you know, have our dreams met. With my experience with, in catering, and Dan's experience in the restaurant industry, we think we are perfect for running a bed and breakfast. We would like to continue to be a part of this neighborhood. We would like to continue to be a part of this community. We give everything we can to different organizations. We belong to many organizations, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Heidi. All right, we'll now move. You guys, y'all are cutting into other people's time, if y'all, if everybody wants to speak. All right, um, let's, let's move to the middle of the room. Come, come forward, yes. Please state your name and address, and when you're finished, go to the table and sign in.
Teresa Thompson, 1506 Avalon. I'm here to oppose the zoning change and commercial B&B conditional use on 1611 Glenn Swetman. The Biloxi LDO regulations are made to protect all the citizens of Biloxi. The circumstances surrounding this location do not comply with the Biloxi LDO for the following reasons. Changing the zoning to RM10 multiple family changes the character of this RS75 single-family residential neighborhood. All the houses surrounding 1611 Glenn Swetman are zoned RS75, and y'all have, well, you didn't get the copies, the, the map that I sent y'all. This is spot zoning for one house for a commercial business. The zoning change provides a precedent that could negatively affect other areas in the entire West End neighborhoods, as well as the other areas of the city. The fact, nothing has really changed since last year, when this same request was denied. There is no mistake in zoning. These houses have always been RS75 and RS75 residential single-family neighborhood. This zoning change does not provide any value add. It's, instead, it takes away the character of a longstanding, well-established RS75 residential single-family neighborhood. This zoning request should be denied. The conditional use for B&B, all nine conditional uses must be met in order to grant a conditional use exception. Some examples showing that the B&B does not meet all. Main one, the new zoning F10 in the B&B exception is not compatible with the surrounding properties, which are all RS75 residential family, single-family. Conditional use C is not met. The B&B rules allow for a daily commercial special event for up to 100 guests. Can be outside and music allowed. This changes the concept of the mom-and-pop home being shared with guests with food and conversation. It allows additional commercialization operation in the neighborhood. Conditional use C and B not met. Consider the parking issues, traffic flow, pedestrian safety, noise, trash, and 100 strangers walking around the house of our neighborhood. Conditional uses D, E, and G not met. The request is a change of one house for a zoning that is not compatible with the RS75 neighborhood, to add a commercial B&B with a conditional use that is not compatible with the RS7 neighborhood. Are we saying two wrongs make it right? I don't think so. The additional use should be denied. For over five years, the citizens in the neighborhoods from Bill Morrison to White Avenue have attended meeting after meeting after meeting, asking for your help to preserve the character of our well-established 100-year-old RS75 residential single-family neighborhoods. If we can't depend on the city council or our elected officials to protect our homes and neighborhoods, who else are we supposed to trust?
Ms. Thompson, thank you for your time. Please sign in at the table. All right, we'll move to the back of the room now.
Hello, my name is Grayson Orman. I live at 125 Miramar Avenue, and the back of my yard is directly, I don't know how to say this, is directly in front of Heidi and Dan's home from the beach side. I wanted to kind of talk about dreams and what it means to come to Biloxi and want to build something that belongs to you, and to do something in the community that brings community together. And, um, I'm just kind of amazed by the anger that some of our friends and neighbors have about this. It's a, it's a little disconcerting to hear their voices and the anger that they have. They have the right to that. I just think it's unfortunate. Um, you know, um, some people would say that this hearing shouldn't even take place. I take exception to that statement because Heidi and Dan have done everything specifically the way that they've been asked to do it, all the way through the process. And this is here today in this hearing because it was referred here by the Planning Development. And so, the system is in place for the purpose. I think everyone here knows that the law is for the protection of our people and the protection of our communities. And so, I recognize that.
Think a battery may be going out. It's flashing.
There it is.
That's it?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I'm kinda thankful that, for that. I was a little nervous. I have 55 seconds to tell you a couple of, this is great. Um, 47 seconds. So, what would I say in 47 seconds? I came to Biloxi to live my dream. I built a home that is a contemporary-style home, that at the time was a little bit of a, a stretch for my neighborhood as well, and I heard opposition on the street. I heard opposition from planning and development. But we worked through the process, and we did it the right way, like Heidi and Dan are doing. And I'm living out my dream. The gentleman that spoke earlier actually said that he's living out his dream in his home. And so, I just wanna ask you to let Heidi and Dan live out their dream? They're bringing unity and community to a place that just a few years ago was riddled with theft. And I know because it happened to me at my house. And since they've lived there, with the help of the police department, the, the crime rate has gone down substantially in our area.
Thank you.
And thank you, guys.
My name is Richard Giardella. I reside at 169 Miramar Avenue. I would like to emphasize that in the immediate vicinity of Heidi and Dan's residence at 1611 Glenn Swetman, there is overwhelming support for their residential zone change. Since entry is from Ibraville, right off of Highway 90, it will have negligible, negligible impact to the neighborhood. Parking and entry to their property are from the south side. The people who have signed the opposing petition do not even see their property or have a reason to drive by it. I would also like to point out that there have been a lot of misleading and exaggerated information put out by those obtaining opposing signatures. Comments like the Swetman House will be next, along with short-term rentals and the commercialization of the area. I myself obtained three signatures on Miramar after the against petition had been signed. My wife was even told we would be opening a can of worms, and she did not know what she was doing because it would be an open door to commercial development. Yes, we should be grateful for people like Heidi and Dan, who took the initiative to spend their life savings to significantly improve their property, which had been vacant for over 16 years. Biloxi should be grateful. They have done this too, to further the attraction of being a significant tourist destination. And the limited number of guests will be grateful as well for receiving the best hospitality in one of the most beautiful houses from the kindest, caring, and most compassionate couple. We are the hospi, we are the hospitality state. Let's do the right thing and make this happen for them. Thank you.
So, I, I have a, I have a question real quick. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak on anything other than this bed, bed and breakfast? Okay, please come forward. Yes, ma'am. And then I'm gonna allow two more people to speak, one for and one opposed. And that puts us over our, our time, but we'll allow two more people to speak, one in opposition, one in favor. Please state your name and address.
Good afternoon. I'm Dana Wild. I live at 1490 Beach Boulevard in Biloxi. My family moved to this beautiful coastal city in October of 2020. We absolutely love it here and feel very blessed to call it home. We've lived in many areas of this country over the course of our adult lives and can honestly say, nothing has compared to the warmth and hospitality we have experienced here in Mississippi. With having experienced this ourselves, I completely understand the draw this area has for tourists. It brings me joy to see the families relishing our beautiful beaches. I love seeing the decorated Mardi Gras floats driving by to the different Mardi Gras events. There are, however, three weekends over the course of the year that bring great stress and uncertainty. They take away our peaceful home and instead create an environment where our homes and homeowners are targets for these massive groups of like-minded individuals. These events I'm talking about are spring break, scraping the coast, and cruising the coast. In the three years we have called Beach Boulevard our home, during these three events, I have had to tell people repeatedly, my home is private property, not a public bathroom. I've told individuals that they can't deposit their large bags of trash they've emptied out of their vehicles onto my private property. I've witnessed indecent acts taking place in full public view. I've had the oaks in front of my home used repeatedly as targets for glass bottles. I've had sleepless nights of blaring music, nerve-wracking engine revs, and burnouts occur until early morning hours. When I asked an individual to stop urinating on my porch, I was threatened that he would use his gun on me. These uncivilized, lawless acts only take place during these three events. These disrespectful behaviors do not exist on our property any other time of the year. I, as a proud resident of Biloxi, ask that our city leaders take all steps necessary to ensure the safety of our city's residents, give the tools and resources needed to empower our first responders for the best possible outcome for our residents and guests that want to visit our beautiful community. In an ever-polarizing world, let's all come to the table and work together to ensure accountability and order are part of these organized events. Let's host events that are thoughtful of all parties, from our beloved police force, our business owners and residents, to our guests from all around the country, and most importantly, safe for all to enjoy. We need to support the proposed ordinance that aims to set standards for these events in Biloxi. Please listen inward and outward. I'll be praying for y'all. Thank you.
All right, I want, um, one person who wants to speak on behalf, and one person who wants to speak against. Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Catherine Lenatretusa, and I reside at 1610 Glenn Swetman, directly across from Heidi and Dan Hoyle's home. I think this house, which remained vacant for so long, will be an asset to our neighborhood. My home is on the historical register. If anyone should be objecting to the house not being proper any longer, I am very proud of my home. Heidi comes over, her home, it's a neighborhood, and it only has six bedrooms. It cannot hold 100 people. They don't plan on doing special events. It's a bed and breakfast where people will feel welcomed by them to come and visit Biloxi and enjoy it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have, we have time for one...
One against.
He, he...
Two more.
I got, got it.
The R's.
He was given time during somewhat, uh, one of our councilmen allotted him the time. You have three minutes.
Mr. President, Bob Hudson, 119 Jefferson Davis Avenue. I really respect you guys and the decision you gotta make today. This is incredible. I mean, it really is. And everybody in this room is, is making great points, and this house is beautiful. I see it all the time. I walk the neighborhood, see it all the time. It's always been beautiful. I, you know, I've heard the arguments from both sides, and I can empathize with both sides. And, but I keep hearing this theme again and again and again about it not being a business, it's not being commercial. It's got a P and L. It's got a balance sheet. It generates revenue. It's a business. Flat out, it's a business. The ordinances are clear in the bed and breakfasts. You can have lit signage. You can't stop them. You give them the right to do that, they can put up a lit sign. They can have 100 guests. Their guests can have guests, and their guests can have guests, and they can throw a big party. I know all about that. I have a short-term owner in front of me, and they have weddings all the time. It's huge. They park in the street. Imagine a seven-bedroom rental. What kind of weddings are gonna have at that? So, it, it, this is, this is just, yes, they mean well, and yes, they could try to control it, but the ordinances allow for a lot more, including the 100 guests. They can't stop. The neighbors might be for it now, but one or two events like that, and they won't be for it anymore.
Guys, please refrain from speaking.
This house has never been close to blight, ever. I hear it going, it's going to blight, it's going to blight. People have lived there. Lights, to my knowledge, have never been turned off. They've always been on. It looks good, but the road conditions to that house are miserable. The entrance to that south parking lot they're talking about, extremely miserable. It's a, it's got a tree in the middle with broken concrete. It's not even paved over, and it's about five feet from the house there. No one ever comes to that house. I don't know, they must live out of state, might be a second home or something. Whoever lives in that house, I don't know who it is, is gonna be miserable with all that traffic passing right next to that house. So, if the house sells to somebody else, they're, they're not gonna like it. It's just not set up for a business. It's in the middle of a neighborhood. These ordinances are clear, and you've gotta do two things. You gotta change the zoning, and you gotta give it a conditional use permit. You're trying to make so many exceptions to make this work. It's like forcing a round peg into a square hole. That's what this seems like. I ask you, just listen to the voters. This is a democracy. This is a democracy. We have this. 124 to 39. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. This concludes citizen comments. We'll now move to our policy agenda, ordinance A.
Ordinance to amend the land development ordinance pertaining to a number of access points.
I'll move it. I'll second it.
All right, that's a first reading. There'll be no discussion. We'll now move to ordinance B, which is a second reading.
Ordinance to approve a zoning amendment to authorize a change in zoning from RS 7.5 medium-density, single-family residential to RM 10 low-density multifamily residential for 1611 Glenn Swetman Street.
This was moved by Mr. Lawrence and seconded by Mr. Gines.
This has been a hot issue for several years, been denied twice at the Bed and Breakfast, right up to Katrina, and then last year, both times been denied because it's .87 acres of a land, but the land chain and the zoning affect four hundred homes and probably two thousand people, whatever happens with it. That's how big that is. That's what the problem with rezoning anything in a RS 7.5 neighborhood. It's always been an RS 7.5 neighborhood. That piece of property listed as RS 7.5, that's a residential, single-family subdivision from Bill Morrison all the way to White Avenue. Ninety percent of them homes are all RS 7.5. So you change the zone one time, which is, which should not ever happen on that small a piece of property. One house affects that many homes and that many people. That is the problem with changing the zone in the middle of an RS 7.5 neighborhood. It was that way for a reason. It's always been RS 7.5. And the Supreme Court has nothing to do with it. You can put a bed and breakfast, nobody said they can't. You can put them in certain areas, that's the city, make that call. So the Supreme Court thing is just another, that don't mean anything. Nobody said they can't have a bed and breakfast, you can't have a tap. They have two of them already, have another with some well. And yes, they like to redo some of the rules and the bed and breakfast, have no problem. My focus here today is rezoning. Rezoning one house to affect that many people, that is not the thing the city of Biloxi should allow. One house, change in the zone affects it that much. That's huge. So, no, can I support this? If my fellow councilman stand up, like one man said, a hundred and twenty-two for it, thirty-nine against it, all right, then you take care of the people. That's our job up here, to look at these things, do, make the right judgment, and vote no on the zoning change. That affects too many people and too many people's homes, their property, their neighborhoods, you break it all down, no matter what you think. Once you change that zone, it is a big change for the whole, all that neighborhood, all those people, all the people investing homes now, building brand new homes. All these homes are built to RS 7.5 standard. The bed and breakfasts do not fit inside of a residential neighborhood. Never have. We never supported any of that before. The two they have is not that. That is a major problem when you change that zone for that small of a piece of land that affect that many people. So, my thing is, when you change that, you affect the neighborhood big time, so there's no way I can have a vote to approve the zoning change. My vote, and I'm asking my city council members to stand up by laws, by LDOs, by what we stand for, to vote down the zoning change. And if they want to change some of the laws with the bed and breakfast, that's up to them. We can do that. Today is one thing, zoning, zoning change, affecting one house, but you're affecting , they're probably roughly four hundred houses from Bill Morrison to White Avenue. And that's all pretty much the same neighborhood. We done fighting that from Father Ryan, fighting it on St. George. People are tired of fighting this and fighting the city. The city should be standing up for them. And the change of zone that affects that many people is not the right thing to do from the city council. Thank you.
Mr. Gines?
I'm glad everyone came out, but the question is, does this meet the condition? And I'm gonna ask Mr. Creel to come on up, and I have three questions for you, Mr. Creel, and I'm sure my colleagues have questions as well. I guess the first one is, does it meet the conditions? How long has this house been in disarray? And the, those are my first two questions.
Okay. My understanding about this house is that it was built last decade for a contractor's wife and that she passed away right before it was completed. The house was clearly built for a purpose other than a single-family home. I mean, it's got six individual bedrooms in it. Each of them, I think, have a fireplace in it. We had a video, or Mr. Hingen had a video that he was gonna show you of a virtual tour through this house. And it would really impress you how well the Hoyes have transformed the inside of this house. This is, this is not a cheaply-run operation. It's a, it is a beautiful house inside and out. They have buffers between them and their neighbors. In my department, we put a map together this week that showed the people who had signed in support of the application and the ones that had signed in opposition. And the people who live immediately around the house, in the direct vicinity of it, are the ones that were in support of it, and I think most of them are here today. The ones who are opposed to it lived further away. They either live closer to, other than one or two, they live closer to Irish Hill, or they actually live several blocks away, and we don't believe that they would be affected by this change. The Hoyes are not asking for a commercial zoning, they're asking for RM 10. Those people that are concerned about RM 10 zoning, opening the door for short-term rental, which has been such a hot topic with us, would not have to worry about that because short-term rental is not allowed in RM 10 zoning. That's one thing. The other thing is, is it with the bed and breakfast ordinance, the owners have to live in the house. They have to be there, so this is not a vacant house that's being rented out to who knows what in there. I honestly believe that what they're doing is bringing the zoning into compliance with what the house was built to accommodate. As far as spot zoning goes, if you're, if you're gonna consider the comments of people who live blocks away from this thing, then you have to take into consideration the fact that right across the street on the west side, it's zone CB. A hotel could be built there right now without any planning commission or council approval needed. And then on the east side across the street, the properties zoned are M-30, which would allow an apartment complex to be built right now without planning commission or city council approval. The, you know, there were questions about, are signs allowed? And the code does allow them to have a, no more than a 12-square-foot sign there to advertise it. But because this would be a conditional use, the council is allowed to add conditions to it. If you, if special events are concerned, then you can approve this, but make one of the conditions that they could not have events that have a hundred people there. And even if they did, they would still have to come in and get a separate permit for that event. The, usually next to single-family zoning, you have RM 10. It's called transitional zoning, which kind of protects the residential people from any commercial zoning that would be there. So if you look across the street and you've got the CB, then you would have the RM 10 before you got to a lot of the RS 7.5. You know, just in, in going through the application with the Hoyes and talking to some of the neighbors, and a lot of these neighbors showed up for the, the planning commission meeting, there were probably thirty that were there to support it, and only two or three that were there to oppose it. And the planning commission believed that this was a, a good request, that's why they voted fourteen to zero to pass it. I've heard questions about, well, you know, this is not a historic home, and it has to be a historic home to be considered as a bed and breakfast, and that's not true. It does say a historic home or other related residential structure. I believe this one falls into that other related residential structure. It is, it has a lot of historic features that were built into it. Matter of fact, the only other house in the neighborhood that has the architectural features that this house has is the Swetman House. And, you know, even though it's not historic, they tried to incorporate it with, by adding a lot of dormers to it and adding fireplaces to it, a lot of other things that, that could be looked at as historic. But the staff supported this request at the planning commission. The planning commission voted fourteen to nothing to approve it, and I believe that this is a reasonable request.
Thank you. I think you answered my last question was, the planning commission, how did they vote? Thank you, Mr. Creel. Anyone else have, back to you, I'm sure Mr. Creel probably needs to stay up.
Thank you, Mr. Gines. Ms. Newman?
Just seems like a no-brainer to me to go ahead and approve this bed and breakfast. Here we have a bed and breakfast that's been there nineteen eighty-seven, did you say? No issues have we've ever had that I'm aware of. That place is always quiet, it's beautiful, it's on a prestigious street in Biloxi. Again, no issues. Here we have another prestigious area, gorgeous home. And every time with the short terminals from Martha Trips Group, they always claim that it's a community of theirs, a family. We all get together and have picnics and barbecues. Well, Heidi, in this area does the same exact thing, and the most important part is, these people that George keeps saying are gonna be affected, want it. So, thank you.
Mr. Demming?
First, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, the bed and breakfast isn't on the table right now, it's just a zoning change we're addressing, right, from 7.5 to 10?
The first, the first item is the zoning change, and then later on the agenda, you'll see the conditional use.
Right, and then we'll get to that. So when it comes to the zoning change, going from RS 7.5 to RS 10, it's not an intense change. Does it keep with the comprehensive plan? That's an important question. I mean, in, in the case that was cited earlier, Modak versus, Modak Tran versus Johnson, the court asked that question, but that case related to something completely different. I understand it says the word spot zoning in that case. That case was addressing impermissible spot zoning by attempting to cheat the game. What they did in Ocean Springs or Jackson County, excuse me, they wrote a text amendment and tried to pass the text amendment off as if it was an ordinance to, to get around the spot zoning issue, right? And the court said that spot zoning is defined as an intense track, or a change to an intense use track surrounded by a sea of lightly intense used zoning, right? And so this isn't, this is 7.5 to 10, it's not intense use, plus use. And in that case, it referred to a B and B as a residential thing. What they wanted to do in that case was get, was open a restaurant. And so they used the Airbnb as a sham, basically, to have a restaurant and said that an Airbnb couldn't make enough revenue, so we wanna sell dinners and, and bring invite guests in every day, and since they would come eat here and leave here, they were actually guests, and they were trying to get around the code. It was to create a restaurant inside of a neighborhood. And the court said that would turn a residential operation, being an Airbnb, being a bed and breakfast, into a, a commercial operation, which would require a much more intense zoning. And so that's why they called it impermissible. The facts aren't the same as in this. And so in this, I think the court would agree that this is not an intensely increased use for the track. This is a slightly different use, both residential, 7.5 to 10, and I think it would be permissible. I think when we talk about the need, the house was built for a certain purpose, and this accommodates that. Does, does Biloxi need more rooms? Obviously, we're a tourist town, we need as many reasons to bring people here as we possibly can have. I guess it started off as a question, but it ended up as an answer, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tisdale.
Yeah, I've visited the property and spoken with the applicants and spoken with their attorney, and they're all unquestionably nice people. The property is now zoned RS 7.5, single-family residential. The requested change is to RM residential multifamily, 10 low-density residential multifamily. The applicants note in the map amendment application on number seven, there's a question that's, that is posed, was there a mistake in the original zoning of the property? And the response was, there appears to be no mistake in the original zoning of the property, but it does appear that zoning changes give significant incentive for development of vacant lots, renovation of existing structures, and enhancement of adjacent neighborhoods. All the properties between Belvedere and Miramar Avenue, from Beach Boulevard to Irish Hill are zoned single-family residential. A great swath of properties in that area are zoned RS 7.5, single-family residential, with the exception, with the exception of some properties fronting Beach Boulevard. Indeed, what would change the character of this neighborhood, and quite possibly other neighborhoods adjacent, would be approving this residential property to operate as a business in a well-established neighborhood. Currently, we've heard there are two permitted bed and breakfasts in Biloxi, one at 125 Room Magnolia, which is in a downtown zone, that's a commercial zone, and 1012 Beach Boulevard, which is in a neighborhood business, another commercial zone. And I wanted to be sure that both of these were historic structures, so I called the Beach Boulevard Bed and Breakfast, and whoever answered the phone said they no longer use that property as a bed and breakfast. I don't know whether that's accurate or not, but...
According to our records, they still have a business license for bed and breakfast, yes.
Right. I just wanna make, that's the first observation. The second is that both of these structures are historic structures. With the definition in the land development ordinance, a bed and breakfast is a private single-family residence of historic significance authorized to rent one or more bedrooms on a daily basis to tourists and so forth. And I stress the phrase, residence of historic significance, and with due respect to Mr. Creel, that's what it says, a residence of historic significance in both of these previous, both of these bed and breakfasts currently permitted are, in fact, of historical significance. I don't believe there's an established need for a bed and breakfast in this residential area. I think approval of this business in the middle of a residential neighborhood literally opens the door to further commercial ventures in this single-family residential area. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Galavan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, usually these things go pretty easy for me. I'd listen to the councilman that's over the particular ward, and usually there's a preponderance of residents that are against it, or there's people that don't say anything, or there's a preponderance on the other side that are for it. This, this is a little bit different because you have a significant amount of people that are for this project, and you have a great number that are, that are against it. So, looking at this development, first of all, I did take a tour of the property today and appreciate the hospitality shown by Dan and Heidi. It's a beautiful home. I don't know how you could occupy this home as a, just a couple or a couple in a regular family with all the rooms and, and space they have there. So it's certainly... So, it certainly speaks to its use being for something more, and a bed and breakfast would be a good use of it. However, I'm struggling with a balancing act here of balancing interests. You have individuals that have their single-family homes, and you have a development right in the middle of it, and normally, I think I would be for it. But there is that question, if we approve this, on how the ordinances are written, it could open other development in the surrounding area. So, I find myself, and I haven't done this maybe once since I've been serving as a council member, I'm right on the middle of the line here. I'm probably going to abstain to this vote today and not vote either way, and I hate doing that. But unless we have another alternative to look at this and amend something or offer, you know, something different that ensures the protection of others, today, I'm going to have to abstain from voting.
Thank you. Jerry, can you give me a rundown of what RM ten allows?
RM ten is residential multifamily. It allows ten units per acre. If this property were vacant, with the amount of acreage they have, they would be allowed to put eight units on it. It does not allow commercial activities, and also, the bed and breakfast ordinance does not allow commercial activities to happen here. If they, if they had an event there and had music, it could only be like acoustical music. It couldn't be anything that could be heard next door. But it's essentially the next step up from single-family residential. It would be the transitional zone that comes right on top of that.
So, basically, basically, the only thing that RM ten could be, the worst case would be a bed and breakfast or a ten-unit apartment.
Eight units, that's correct.
Eight-eight unit apartment, I'm sorry. That would be, okay. How many, so with their property, you said it's point eight-nine acres, is that correct?
Point eight-seven.
So, is that because, because it's so close to one acre that an exception is given for that, or for it to be zoned RM ten?
Oh, you're talking about spot zoning?
Yeah, but, no, because you said if it's RM ten and it's an acre, you can do...
Ten units.
Ten units, okay. So, it's by the tenth of...
That's right, because they don't have four.
So, if it was a half acre, you could do five units?
That's correct, yes.
All right. With that being said, I have a question. Would it, so right now, bed and breakfast fall under, have to have an RM ten zoning in order to do this? Would it be, and I, and I, this weekend, I've been very busy. I work for the governor, and so, I didn't have a chance to come and walk through the home with you guys, and we have a pretty big day, about twenty-one days from today. And so, I've been very busy, but, and I visit, this Sunday, I drove through the neighborhood, viewed the home, all the surrounding area, as I promised, people on the opposing side and the supporting side that I would. My issue is that I don't have a problem with this bed and breakfast in this area. However, I do have some reservations to the rezoning because it can open other things where someone could come in and open a five-plex or a five-bedroom apartment in the area. My question is this, what would it take and how long would it take for us to pass a zone or create a zoning within the city that is bed and breakfast specific to where we don't run into that issue? So, I guess what I'm saying is, if today, I made a motion to table this with the charge that we make a zoning in the city of Biloxi for a bed and breakfast specific zoning to where if, if this situation happens somewhere else, we don't run into the issue, or someone else says, okay, three doors down, I want to make a five-bedroom apartment here, and then they have the option to appeal a denial based upon three, four lots down, we gave an approval for an RM ten zoning.
It usually takes about six to eight weeks for us to put language together for something like that. You know, it's possible that would work, but if you have the same situation happen in an area like this, you're going to run into the same opposition.
So, what I'm hearing today from most of the opposition is not the bed and breakfast specifically, but the zoning, they're scared of the other things that are attached to the zoning. That's, that's what I'm hearing. That's what George, that's what George said, I mean, he's in agreeance with me. So, is there any way that we could do this faster than eight weeks?
This is a conditional use. The city council always has the right to add any other restrictions.
I understand that, but if we give, I understand that, but if we give an RM ten zoning, that opens the door for a five-bedroom apartment, or if somebody comes in and buys two homes beside each other and they have one acre, they can put a ten-bedroom or ten-apartment unit in an RM ten zoning. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, that could happen, but it's just unrealistic to think that they're going to tear down this beautiful home and build eight units on this piece of property.
I understand.
Yeah.
I'm, what I'm trying to do is find a common ground between the two sides, and what I would, go ahead. I have a motion I'd like to make, go ahead, Mr. Newman.
One concern with what you're doing is, one, this is, this rezoning is just for this one track. It's not for tracks around it. And if we create a new zone for bed and breakfast, and then we change the zone for the bed and breakfast, the precedent isn't being set for RM ten. The precedent is being set for changing the zone. So, then if someone comes in and still wants to do an RM ten, they're going to say, you guys are spot zoning here for them, so come spot zone for us. It's the change that sets the precedent, not the necessary zone that we change it to. And so, my concern is if we did that, if we, if we change it to a different zone, that doesn't cure the problem, it just creates the problem.
I believe that, too. That would be correct.
Mr. President? That's not true. You have an RM ten to allow a conditional use for a bed and breakfast. What you're saying, you're not doing anything. What you, it's just meant absolutely nothing. Here is a zoning change to allow conditional use for a bed and breakfast. That's what it is. So, RM tens are still in effect for, like Nathan's saying, all the other things you could add to it. What you're doing is just a conditional use for the bed and breakfast. It's not permitted in there. It's not allowed in there. You have to change the zone, and the reason they changed the zone, Jerry, is changing the zone so they can get the conditional use for the bed and breakfast. The only reason he's doing this, that's it. And let me tell you something else, Jerry. The man built the house for his grandkids to stay with him. You know that as well as anybody. He didn't build a house for bed and breakfast, never did. Sorry his wife got sick, both of them died, and they sold the property. And the next bunch went to bed and breakfast, we voted it down. Come back last year, bed and breakfast, they voted it down. And let me get something else clear with everybody in here. All of y'all are great people. All y'all have great character. I'm not saying anything about Heidi or anybody else in this room. So, all this stuff about how nice they are, I think all of y'all nice, and everybody has the right to speak their piece. I have no problem with that. I know a lot of y'all from a long time. Y'all are all great people. Y'all have great character. So, all this stuff about they so nice, they all nice. That has nothing to do with changing the zone. You're changing the zone to permit something that's not allowed in there, period.
It's either N B or it's...
Mr. President?
It's in, it's in B. It's a neighborhood business zone.
Yeah, there are some RM ten, that area over there that...
Okay, I would, I'm, I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion to table this rezoning and charge the planning commission with quickly coming up with a zoning specifically for bed and breakfast. And I'm not going to vote against this bed and breakfast, but I'm also not going to vote for the zoning change. So, if this doesn't pass, I'm not going to vote, I'm going to, I'm going to do the same as Kenny, and I'm going to abstain from voting. So, I'll make, I'll make a motion to set a, to create a zone specifically for bed and breakfast, and, and then we can come back and revisit this. We have a first and we have a second discussion.
A second.
Okay. No discussion? I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Okay, all opposed? Motion fails, four to three. Any other discussion on the original rezoning request?
I'll put a question.
I'll call for the question. All in favor of item B as written? All opposed?
That's not the right thing to do.
Yep.
You two need, you need, you two need to step up. I don't care how you vote, we got, these people need a vote.
I believe, I believe that the bed and breakfast is a good deal. However, I do not believe that the rezoning is the right thing to do.
Mr. President, Mr. President, point of order, point of order, point of order.
I'm abstaining.
Mr. President, carry on out the motion, please.
The motion passes three to two. All right, order, order. We'll now move to the next agenda item. Okay, guys, 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 please wait until you leave the room to have your conversations. We've still got a meeting. All right, item C?
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning from RS five, high-density, single-family residential to RM ten, low-density, multifamily residential for three twenty-one Nelson Road.
This was moved by Mr. Glavine, seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Any discussion?
I really don't have anything to add. I think it kind of meets the criteria, Director, if you want to add something to it.
It's right next to the parking lot where Rouse's is being done. I mean, it's, it's essentially in their parking lot or right next to it, so I have no objection.
Mr. Lawrence?
Nothing.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes seven zero. Next item?
Ordinance to amend Chapter ten point five, Harbors, Marinas, and Waterways, Article two, birthing rates.
This was moved by Mr. Lawrence and seconded by Mr. Guines. Discussion?
Who's going to answer the question, Mike or Peter?
I can.
What are you doing here?
I tried to give you a heads up, this was going to come up. I'm not sure if you got the mail I sent you. What D, what item D is, it's an ordinance that changes, it gives a litmus test, a litmus test or a test to slip residents on qualifying for their, the three-dollar per foot rate. In other words, we're saying, if you want the three-dollar per foot rate, which is what the rate that the charter boats get, you need to prove you're a charter boat. There are, there are boats in the harbor that say they're charter boats that aren't, but they're getting three-dollar foot rate. So, what we need is a test. That's what this ordinance establishes.
And this, this had come up, and Councilman Demming pointed out, what if you're a new business? How do you prove that you've had six paid charter trips? So, we, we took it off. I think we tabled it last week, and we added language, proof of six paid charter trips over the prior calendar year. So, I think it was out on the table, and we took it off and added that language to it.
Well, I think if you're going to do that, it needs to be at least twelve trips, and it just says the first year of the new year. So, to me, you need to have twelve charters a year to say you're a charter boat to get all your great rate, because half the people in there don't do charters.
Well, six trips...
Well, six, you need more than six.
Right, we'll take an amendment if you want to amend it, it's fine.
So, you need at least twelve, that's one a month. Anybody who knows any charter boat business, you have to have at least, that does them some good. Six, they can slide around. If you want to really do something, seventy-five percent of that tax money has to be created from charter boat sale. If you want to prove them to be charter boats. They have W nine falling, they have tax falling. You kind of have a reason. Six trips don't get it. You got to have way more than six.
Want to make a motion for twelve?
I make a motion, I would put that as twelve every year, to make sure every year, this charter boat that's sitting in the harbor is running charters. So, yes, I'll make that motion, that it needs to be twelve a year, every year.
And I'll second it. I'll second it.
All right, is there discussion?
That's even better.
All right, what I'm adding in here is, I'm striking six, I'm changing that to twelve, and after the prior calendar year, I'm putting comma and each year thereafter.
The motion respectfully is every year, so I would ask the gentleman from Ward one, if he would amend it to, to mirror that language the prior year, because the first year, someone getting a new license can't prove they did twelve trips the prior year, so it would have to be the second year to get reapproved, they would have to...
I disagree with that. Somebody would open up a charter, they're going to make sure they do twelve trips.
Okay, so what if I open a charter business in October? And what if I open a charter business in October? I'm not going to have twelve, it's possible that I don't have twelve charters as a new business by the end of the year.
No, he, actually, the requirement is that you have to have, you have to show that you've done twelve trips already, but you don't even have a license yet. So, it's going to have to be the second year that you have to show that you did twelve trips the prior year.
Twelve months.
Yes.
Right, not the first year. To get the license, you need to show it the previous, the following year.
Or to renew the license.
Okay, so do we have the language correct?
To renew the license.
The language I'm proposing is, we change six to twelve, twelve paid charter trips over the prior calendar year, comma, and each year thereafter.
Yes, and if they get a new license, it's to renew.
Okay.
Going to have to keep doing that.
We have a first and we have a second. Do we have discussion?
Yeah, I got, I got a little bit. I understand why, you don't want to verify these boats are doing what they're intended to do, but, you know, gee whiz, we're already putting some restrictions on it, why add additional restrictions? There could be a couple hurricanes, there could be some boats that get in disrepair. There, there's a number of factors that could come into play. Somebody may get sick and, or their family may be sick, and they may have to suspend things, but they would continue paying the boat fee. I'd crawl before we walk and walk before we run on this thing. I, I'm having a pause on supporting it, but it's majority rules.
Mr. Demming?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you, Kenny, absolutely. I'm still perplexed by the use of the word prior. So, if they have to prove at least six paid charter trips over the prior calendar year, doesn't prior mean before? So, a new business that was never in operation could never satisfy that, that requirement. It would have to be over the coming year.
The new year.
I think what we're looking at, starting with the people that are currently getting a charter boat rate, and some do not even have a, have a requirement to get a license or anything. They just said, I'm a charter boat person, they went to the...
So, could we use the term renewal and say, for renewal, they would have to prove the twelve or six prior years? That was a Felix Gine term, I'll give it to him. I give credit. So, the, would that be a better way to address that, is by putting the word renewal in there? A new, a new business can't meet those needs to get a license. However, we change that requirement to renewals, then someone could get a new license and upon renewal prove that he had complied. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
And then it catches the people that have current charter licenses that aren't using it, they would fail.
Well, it does talk about to qualify for a charter boat rate, they have to submit a valid business license or sales tax permit, proof of commercial license, commercial insurance, and then proof of at least how many paid charter trips over the prior calendar year. So, I mean...
So, a new business would have zero trips over the prior calendar year, could never meet that standard.
The certification would be the twelve subsequent months.
Subsequent would be fine, right. So, renewal or subsequent satisfies our intent.
For six or twelve, Councilman Demming?
I didn't say a number, I said intent. I didn't say a number, I said intent. I'm whatever the will, the council is on the quantity.
Could we also amend it to put some kind of language in to address like what Councilman Glavine, so you know, unforeseen circumstances such as boat damage, a hurricane, sickness, unforeseen sickness.
I would say certification based on circumstances.
Well, in our charter boat.
Put natural disasters. All you have to do is put natural disaster.
Well, our normal rules have that anyway. Our normal rules have the force majeure anyway if there's a disaster. I mean, I think we waived some fees during the BP's bill. I mean, we just did that. And we.
Okay, any other discussion?
But I would add prior calendar year and each year for renewal thereafter. So I think that would cover that.
Okay, so we have a first and a second.
Well, I didn't hear this additional language. I'm not clear on if they have a medical or a natural disaster, we understand. But what if they blow an engine or two or have a fire or vandal? I mean, there could be extenuating circumstances.
Extenuating circumstances.
Yeah.
This has become a very complicated amendment by Mr. Lawrence. Maybe we should table this for a week just so we get the language right.
Clearly, the council is on board with this concept.
Well, I would like to ask Mr. Lawrence to repeat what his amendment is.
I mean, really, what would happen in the first year? Somebody would say that they were a charter boat and we give them the $3 rate and then to renew, they'd have to prove that they are doing the charters in order to renew.
I agree, I just know that there's a motion to amend on the table that Mr. Lawrence raised, and I don't think that his motion has anything to do with all the language we just talked about. And so I would like him to.
I think it did.
He wanted to add 12, he didn't talk about the renewal language. So I would just recommend that he withdraws motion or restate the motion adding the new language, or you guys pull it off and correct the language and bring it back to us. I just wanted to be clean.
Well, I think he added another thing he needed to put into the resolution, didn't you, Peter?
But it's your motion.
Let's restate, let's restate the amendment. Let's do that.
Have Peter to restate it, restate it, and you motion it, and I'll come back and second it, like we did.
I'll restate the changes that I heard him say. Proof of at least 12 paid charter trips over the prior calendar year, comma, and each year for renewal thereafter, and then the rest is as is.
I had no problem with that.
Where's the?
I motion that.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
Where's the language on for any natural disasters or extenuating circumstances?
We don't really have that on any of our charter boat rates or boat rates or anything. I mean, that's just something that could be done at a different time. If it's a natural disaster, I can't just.
I understand, but I mean, that isn't what we had a give and take conversation, and then it went back to just this and then erased that. So I can't support it, but majority rules. I just know that we've had the charter boat captains, the commercial fishermen in here. We have them in our docks. We're going to put six trips. That's how it was proposed, and now we're piling on and adding some more to them. And I can't look them in the eye. I've been meeting with them on a regular basis on the shrimp dumping and other issues with our charter boats, and I just can't, I can't look them in the eye and tell them that I add it to it. So that's my two cents.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
No.
My only comment would be kind of along Kenny's line of thinking. I'm good with six trips the previous year, the prior year, or for renewal or whatever. And I'd like to see us grow from there. If we've got to bump it up later, we can always amend that, but 12 trips is a bit too much for me.
12 trips is an old, if they don't do 12 trips, well, then they're going to be in business.
All right, if they're.
That's automatic. And like what Kenny said, if the man gets sick or something like that, has a problem, what do you think you're going to do? They'll know that, they'll take care of that problem. You don't have to put it out in writing. We're not that bad people. They'll take care of them.
Okay, so we have an amendment. We have a second. If there's no more discussion, I'll call for the question. All in favor of the amendment? Okay, raise your hands again, all in favor of the amendment? Okay, I have three for, all in opposed to the amendment. The amendment fails four to three.
Call for the question.
I'll call for the question on the original language.
Hold on, I'm sorry to interrupt the call for the question, but we do need that language that gets the subsequent year that way. So I'll move to amend the language to reflect that the required trips be on the subsequent year and every year thereafter. The six required trips on that, the subsequent years thereafter.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any other discussion?
So what are we doing, going back to the original?
Six.
Resolution?
Yes.
Or do you make up something else? What'd you say?
He just dropped it to six, that's all.
He went back to six.
That's what I said, you went back to the regular resolution.
But also, and each year.
Add it subsequent instead of.
Well, you didn't have to do anything.
But also each.
What are you making your voting on?
We're adding each year for renewal thereafter. We're clarifying that as well.
I'll make a lot of things a lot harder than what it is. The first one fails, you vote on another one.
All right, call for the question. All, I'm calling for the question on the amendment. We have a first, we have a second, all in favor. All right.
Seven zero.
Now, I'll call for a question on the item as amended. All in favor? Seven zero. All right, we'll now move to item.
Resolution appointing Corey Christie to the Biloxi Architectural and Historic.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. We have a first by Mr. Guines, second by myself. Any discussion? All in favor? Mr. Lawrence, are you a yes or a no?
What we do?
E, Mr. Corey Christie to the.
That's not a foul.
Okay.
Unanimous.
Seven zero. Unanimous.
I thought we had amended. I mean, I thought Rob was going to speak and amend that.
It was for a short-term rental.
Corey Christie.
Yeah, about that.
Item F.
Resolution to grant conditional use approval for a bed and breakfast at 1611 Glenn Swetman Street.
Have a.
I move that. It's for discussion.
I'll second it.
The discussion. Now y'all got yourself in a trap. It does not meet the conditional uses, so I guess y'all are going to vote this in anyway. But it doesn't meet the conditional uses. It's not compatible to the neighborhood. It was never built to be a bed and breakfast. You have the problem with the 100 people coming, the noise, the music. It does not meet the non-conditional uses to be paid, to be passed. So now, y'all going to pass something against our laws? Because it does not meet the conditional uses. Jerry Creel can't make it meet it. They can't make it meet it. It's not compatible to the neighborhood. That's the biggest one of the first conditional use. So now, now you put yourself against the wall. So are we going to abstain or are we going to vote? So it does not meet the non-conditional uses, but it must meet to be passed. So now.
What was your question to me?
Now, there ain't no question, it's a fact. It does not meet the non-conditional uses. It's not compatible with the neighborhood. You're going to have parking problems, you have traffic problems, and you're going to have loud noise, all that.
All right. Mr. Guines?
Okay, I have no problem with it.
Any other discussion? All right, our attorney has advised myself and Kenny because we abstained from the zoning vote to abstain from this as well. So I call for the question.
You ain't got to stand for this. We're doing two different things.
Well, I'm going to take the advice from, I'm going to take the advice from the attorney, George.
Don't vote for it. You come here to represent the people, abstaining, don't get it.
All right.
I mean, I don't care how you vote, but by golly, vote.
Let's please call for the question. Call for the question?
Call for the question. All in favor?
And what? We're not voting. They're not getting issued. So I don't, yeah, it's the same thing.
Hold on.
Would you two abstain in this? What do you think?
So you voted yes?
No, I'm not voting yes.
You just raised your hand. Okay.
Does not meet the conditional uses.
So I'm calling for the question on item F. Is there any other discussion? Calling for the question, all in favor? All opposed? We have a three-two vote. Mr. Guines, Ms. Deming?
All right, it's understandable.
Mr. Guines, Ms. Newman, Mr. Deming in favor. Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Tisdale opposed, and myself and Mr. Mr. Glavine abstained. All right. I was going to call you, Mr. Lawrence. All right, we'll now move to the next item.
Resolution granting conditional use for a short-term rental at 136 Keller Avenue AMB.
Please refrain from conversation while you're leaving the room. Please read it again.
Resolution granting short, conditional use for a short-term rental at 136 Keller Avenue AMB.
I move that.
All right, we have a first, we have a second discussion. First by Mr. Lawrence.
We just approved short-term rentals across the street. So this is all, they didn't, we didn't destroy that neighborhood, so it's all short-term rentals. So you can't deny this one. We just passed two across the street. So believe it or not, we have to pass the short-term rental.
Okay, we have a first.
Y'all going to abstain or you going to vote? The short-term rental, y'all.
George.
Yeah. Well, that's pretty.
We have a first and we have a second. Any other discussion? I call for the question, all in favor? Seven zero. Item H?
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize construction of a two-family residential dwelling at 2730 Fernwood Road.
I'll make that motion.
All right, we have a first.
I'll second.
We have a second, first by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Guines. Discussion?
Yes, this vacant piece of property on a very short street. It's going to be a duplex. I'm sure everybody read the transcript. I think it's two 800 square foot units. Gentleman said it's going to be, I guess, his son's property, but he's building it to house his son and his daughter. So anyway, I have no problem with that. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? If not, I call for the question, all in favor? Item I?
Resolution adopting amended rules and regulations for vessels in the Biloxi Sherman-Kanon fishing dock and the commercial docking.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this was already moved. Let me find them.
Lawrence Glavine.
It was tabled. Lawrence and Glavine. Discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Yes. This is, what have y'all changed? Y'all substituted, you pulled it, you did it again. So what have y'all done?
Four I.
All right, let me do it.
You want to take it?
Yeah, last time when we tabled it, it was combined with the rules for the Point Cadet Marina. And so to make it clearer, we've separated the Point Cadet rules and the Sherman-Kanon rules as far as any changes being made. The only change is being made is at the very end. We're amending it, amending the rules to make it clear that no boat owner, crew or guests can live aboard any boat at the Sherman-Kanon Harbor.
So what about the live aboard? They can't be that?
They cannot, it's prohibited. All the other rules remain in effect. Thank you.
All right, we had a.
I don't have anything.
Okay, any other discussion? Nothing? All right, I call for the question, all in favor? Five zero with Mr. Guines and Mr. Deming out of the room. Item J?
Resolution adopting amended charter boat rules and regulations for operation in the Biloxi Small Craft Harbor and Point Cadet Marina.
I move that.
Second.
I have the first by Mr. Lawrence.
Couple of things, Peter. Has this annual fee of $500 always been in there?
This annual fee has never been in there, and Mike, you can take that one. This is a, this is not for people that rent slips in the harbor. These are for people that just show up and want to use the harbor, picking up charters, come from other cities.
So for example, George, so let's, somebody gets on the internet, they're staying in a hotel in Biloxi, and they get on the internet and they book a charter. And the charter is a boat in the Gulfport Harbor. So the guy in Gulfport Harbor drives over and picks them up and takes them out for their fishing event. That's what we're trying to put into is people using our harbor for charters that are being paid at, in other harbors.
So I mean, if somebody comes from Gulfport and goes to the small craft or pick up somebody on the boat.
They need to have a permit to do that.
And that's $500 for them to have a boat. Well, how do you know when they come? Who calls that in? How do you know if I'm picking up this over here at the harbor?
The harbor masters, yeah.
That's why I'm actually.
They could probably tell you the name of the boats. It's probably a routine event because we've got all the hotels, so the people staying over in our town, but they're, you know, they're advertising, these guys are advertising, the harbor masters catches them, you know, coming into our harbor, pulling in, picking up, picking up their passengers and going on a fishing trip. So they're taking business away from our harbor, basically.
Don't think it's a bad idea. Me, you got the harbor masters, though, they, how are they going to know that? You hide most of them just here, they don't know the boats.
They know the boats.
You got to get away from the TV to work to make sure they check themselves out. They're spilling out the boats they don't see. I mean, I have no problem doing it. It's me having them, you know, them actually working, doing their job. That's my problem.
The problem is, these people are taking advantage of the situation. They have identified these people who do this on a regular basis. This is a way to at least, you know, help offset some of the things that, you know, people who paid to be chartered fishermen in the harbor.
I have a question. So this is a $500 annual fee?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you want to pick people up.
So we chart, so could we make? All right, I guess that wouldn't work, so.
A lot of people.
I was just thinking $3 a foot, but I mean, that's any charter boat for a year, that's going to be over a, over $500 anyway. So yeah, I have no problem with this. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll call for the question, all in favor? All opposed? Five to one with Mr. Glavine in opposition. Mr. Guines has left. Now move to the consent agenda.
The move.
Have a first.
Second.
Have a second, first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence, discussion?
On O, I think that's Oscar, are these the 12-foot mowers that they were looking to buy? They said like to cut the iron shield. These are the 12-foot, the big ones?
Yeah, this is one.
I know we talked about we're going to buy them.
Well, these are the mowers that we didn't play, didn't come in last year.
There are two sets of purchases in this consent agenda. Some of it is new stuff being bought right now, off the shelf, being delivered this year. And there's another group, which I think I, five EE, FF, GG, HH, I, I, and JJ are all items that were bought last year but didn't come in yet, so we have to roll the money over.
Okay.
So the ones I just read to you, five EE through five JJ, are the ones that we're rolling the money over. The other ones are purchases this year and this budget year. The other ones are purchases this year and this, this budget year.
Yeah, 'cause I know a lot of stuff that we, we asked them to do, to buy stuff. I notice we have a lot of trucks in that. Are these brand-new, are they being replaced? Are these just added trucks?
They're new trucks, and, uh, I think you'll see over time, um, we'll be surplusing the ones they're replacing.
So you'll, you'll sell those all?
Right, so now that we're doing this auction, we don't have to wait till the end of the year. We can, as soon as those new trucks come in, we can have them turned in by the departments if they don't need them anymore, and we can, we can surplus.
I noticed that we're doing that, but I never did notice anything about buying new equipment for these forks and that. Do we have, we buy new trucks, we buy new mowers, we buy this, but we need equipment like Lear Mall Park needs new equipment. So when, when are we gonna buy this? And where's that gonna come from, the money? 'Cause we need to replace that.
Yeah, well, you know, on a regular basis, the, the share is getting quotes for different pieces of equipment, so we do that all the time.
Yeah, so we have the money to buy.
And we got the budget in, you know, in, in the budget.
As long as we have the money to buy it, you know, we need all this new stuff, but we definitely need playground equipment, and like everybody says, the lights, all these parks, we need to make sure that's done as fast as possible. I mean, that looks so bad, but the ballparks that don't have lights, or this don't have light, or the soccer fields don't have light, that's, that's an embarrassment. That's the stuff we working on. I'm talking, that, that should have never happened to me. Anyway, that's that part.
Question, 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 Ms. Demming.
On this, uh, the one on QQ? We done is agreeing with transfer, Mississippi Transit Commission, act them through the thing. How much money we don't, we're talking about here? It's on really list, I, on, I didn't see the rest of it.
PP and QQ go together. PP and QQ are, are related to each other, and one of them establishes a capital project, and the other one, uh, commits the funding, our, our match to that capital project. That's for the repair of the bridge. You'll recall, the mayor's number-one infrastructure priority is the Puff House Ferry Extension. His number-two priority has always been repair of the bridge, repair of the existing bridge.
So, how much match is it? Whatever, do you, have y'all requested, like 15 million?
15.
Okay, and our, our, what is ours, 20% or 10%?
Twenty, yep.
Project's 15 million, 12 from federal government, three from the city of Biloxi.
And that's just coming out of the budget?
Yeah.
No, that we gonna get that money from somebody else?
Yep.
And that to replace the draw?
Repair the draw, repair the draw mechanism.
The grid, they're gonna replace the grid, actually.
And this here, TT, I don't know, these advisories, you gotta have a letter. What, what are you doing? We have to have some letter of an agreement with the advisory board from the Mississippi dial. So what is?
That's, uh, that's Jason Thomas, who's, uh, been our municipal advisor for at least four or five years. This is just renewal of his contract.
Okay, but does he work? He's like Keith Hurd, he don't work. I mean, he works, he does his job. What's he do?
We've, we've done bonds in the last four or five years, all the bonds we've done, the.
These are bond, the bond money.
Right.
Okay. I didn't get that out of it, being a bond money. And a DDD, Mike, is this a new boat, or is this another same boat that we've been having at the harbor? Has this already been there?
That's a parasail, that's a, um, yeah, that's a renewal. It's, it's, uh, they've been there since 2021.
And it's the same, have you adjusted the price, it's the same price? What y'all been doing with that?
Well, they're not, they're, they're gonna be out of the marina during the winter months, so we're just adjusting, uh, that, and we're also adding the CPI that was from the old agreement. So their total rent is 241.63 a month.
Okay. And the last one, the Js, three Js? The Rebel Boat Yacht, is that, that's the one in Daville?
No, that's, uh, that's on Fifth Street.
Oh, that's, that's Bowden? That's the neighbor here?
It's to the west of Bowden's. This is Clyde, Clyde Burton.
So it's another one?
Yes.
Okay, and what are we doing with that?
Well, there were some mistakes or some errors in the, the old lease. You know, the Greater Biloxi Economic Foundation is a co-owner with us on that, and the lease had them listed as the Innovation Center. They used to run the Innovation Center.
Right.
So our auditors just brought up that as, uh.
I didn't think they existed anymore.
Now, the Greater Biloxi Foundation does exist.
But they still own this property or part of it? I thought we bought them out.
Yes. Now, Bowden bought, uh, bought his lease out. But, but we still own this piece of property there. And, uh, originally, in, uh, 2000. No, even before, even back when, probably back when Gerald was mayor, it was 50-50 between, uh, the Greater Biloxi Foundation and the City of Biloxi owned it 50, 50% each.
So what do we gain out of that?
He pays the rent, his monthly rent he pays, we split that among the two parties.
All right. Thank you.
That's everything.
That's it for me, I mean.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming?
Is this a record? Have we ever had this many items? Is Triple J?
We never have.
Yeah, we, uh, we fortunately were a few letters short.
I bet the under at 6:30, 6:30, I bet the under, so gotta move it along here.
We've got about 50, 50 code, code violations too.
Yeah, I have to be somewhere tomorrow.
That's about the longest it's ever been.
Uh, on item B, this is the municipal compliance question there. The question I ask every year is all these, are all these responses accurate?
They're accurate and they're similar to the last year.
All right, and stray electron here. We haven't received the fiscal year 22 audit, correct? Is that?
No, we're expecting.
Okay, all right, we're always expecting that. All right, if you'll go to item J. Um, this is the new city emblem for the visitor center. I just wanna be sure it's not a picture of the mayor smiling. That's not the new emblem, is it? Like now? Okay.
Declaration crest, I think.
It'll be the Biloxi logo, correct?
Picture Fred Hayes with spikes.
Please. Um, on item L? Let me find it. Um, this is on Father Ryan Air Conditioning for that, I guess it's had old, what is it? The old Waterworks?
Waterworks.
So they're gonna put an air conditioning unit there? What, what's stored there that needs conditioning? I'm just curious.
A lot of paper, a lot of paper documents we have to.
Okay, so it's a repository of some sort. And then on item KK, just indulge me just for a moment. This is, uh, the master services agreement with Neil Schaefer. And, um, they're basically increasing their hourly rates for engineering construction by 5%. And, and there was a 2% increase, I think, in, in fiscal year 21. And I just wanna point out that, and I noticed with the vehicles we're buying, it seems that the vehicle's more expensive now than they were two years ago or three years ago. I just wanna make the point that the cost of everything we're purchasing, the people we're, the services we're dealing with, that cost is going up. And, uh, even though we have record revenue from gaming, that's only one side of the picture. And it's great that we have, uh, gaming revenue records, but the expenditures, the cost of doing business with other entities is also going up. Thank you, that concludes my comments. That's not a smile. Give me a smile for that emblem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale.
Thank you.
Mr. Glavine?
I, I have no comments, I'm ready to get to our code enforcement.
Just real quick, um, items GGG and Triple H. This is just, um, um, Bellevie or Pitcher Point donating land for a lift station right there where they just sold that tract of land, correct? And, okay, that's, that's the only question I have. So I'll ask for exceptions first. Um, I'll call for the question, all in favor of the consent agenda? Any exceptions? Mr. Lawrence, Ms. Newman, got it right? Mr. Demming? Mr. Tisdale? All right, no exceptions? Mr. Cre. You have an exception?
I was gonna make a motion, we adjourned, but that's okay. Can't make a motion with Peter's side. Y'all did well.
Code enforcement hearings.
See you later.
Item A on the agenda, Reevan Nguyen Estate, 234 Lee Street, that case has been resolved. Item B, Social Brothers Roofing Incorporated, 156 Doris, this property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of or in opposition to Social Brothers Roofing, 156 Doris Street? If not, this case is closed. Next item.
Item C, Social Brothers Roofing Incorporated, 162 Doris Street, this property's still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf or in opposition to Social Brothers Roofing, 162 Doris Street? If not, this case is closed.
Item D, Noah J. Sanders Jr. Estate, 118 Lee Street, that case has been resolved. Item E, Southwind Owner LLC, 1655 Irish Hill Drive, that property's still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf or in opposition to Southwind Owner LLC, 1655 Irish Hill Drive? If not, this case is closed. Next item.
Item F, Southwind Owner LLC, 1667 Irish Hill Drive, this property's still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf or in opposition to Southwind Owner LLC, 1667 Irish Hill Drive? If not, this case is closed.
Item G, WTA Incorporated, 216 Rodenberg Avenue, this property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of or in opposition to WTA Inc., 216 Rodenberg Avenue? If not, this case is closed.
Item H, Helen J. H. Mikovich, 11415 Quint Place, this property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of or in opposition to Helen J. H. Mikovich, 11415 Quint Place? If not, this case is closed.
Item A, David A. Canacci, uh, 432 Diaz Avenue, that property has been resolved.
Thank you. Need a motion for the routine agenda?
Second.
We have a first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
Latest update, Walt, on, uh, where we have with everything?
Afternoon, counsel. Yep, still afternoon. So this morning, good news, we received our 1.57 million dollars that we discussed at our last council meeting. Next, in the lineup for funding, we have 2.05 million. It's on what they call step three of five, and that's been in there four days. So we should have that. We won't have it by our next council meeting, but hopefully within the first council meeting in November. And followed behind the 2.05 million, we have an additional 879,000 beyond that.
So that's good for us, keeping our construction going. And the man spoke today about Crawford Street, you know, I spoke about that?
Yes, sir.
I mean, we need to explain to him what's gonna happen. Are we planning on doing something? Or do we have to hold any cases money?
No, sir, I'll speak to the gentleman that was here. Um, he was, Crawford is open now on both sides. Previously, as you had mentioned to me, you had the same concerns that the north end of Crawford was blocked, that if we had a heavy flood, nobody would be able to get out south on Crawford to Howard, because there's, we got a bad dip there. Uh, the reason why it was closed is we were doing a jack and bore underneath the CSX Railroad, so we had that entire north section blocked off. It's all open now, you can go north or south on Crawford, both ingress and egress are available. But we will speak to the gentleman, uh, I came in to listen to his concerns earlier.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other discussion? If not, I call for the question, all in favor? Five-zero. One, two, three, I need a motion to adjourn. Have a first by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Glavine, all in favor? Record time, three and a half hours.
Five o'clock, how about that?